Fresh from volleyball at the high school. We won't see you one.
Oh, they're on the voltage.
Yeah.
Are you guys playing together?
No, we just played games against them.
What's going on?
I agree with you exactly.
You can't coach your kids.
She can't coach them.
They have to use the side out.
Oh, yeah. Yes. There now.
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, God.
We could also hide the spring bud.
It's amazing how that affects them.
The first thing we can do is move them.
But the chief will go way before them.
Let him have his air.
Let's see if I can trip my next cord.
Don't do it.
I went in and slept today. And I came home and said, well, I don't have to do that again.
Well.
That was a good feeling.
Thank you for serving the children.
I mean, I'll do it again if they need me.
My son is only, he did his summer schedule once or twice a week. But he has to go in quite a lot. They're very short staffed. It's a, it's a place in school in order to learn.
Yeah.
And so he's been trying to do a lot of interviews. They're just trying to get the staff in place.
There were a lot of towns weren't even able to run their full summer until this.
So, having people with no experience, he's just giving training then. You know, the behavioral intervention is trained.
On the fly.
Out of the S.
I did send you my check.
We're looking for vintials.
I saw what I put. I watched some hot just jumped to seven nineteen, which is really weird.
Don't let him do that again.
If you're going to speak in audiences, citizens, you should sign on the podium. There's a list.
Bud, do you want to come sit at the table next to Richard?
I'm good.
You're okay?
Trying to get seats for other people.
Oh, I could do that if you'd like.
Or this chair here is fine.
This is cool.
Do you hear?
Sleepy trace.
Good.
Thank you, Bud. All council members are present here in the annex with our town manager, John L. Sesser. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is ours, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If there's anyone that wants to speak during audiences, citizens, please be sure that you signed up at the podium. Is there anyone who has not signed up yet? Chief Palmer, do you want to go first?
Yes, please. Thank you and good evening. It's good to be back at a council meeting again. So, those of you who follow our Facebook page, our Police Department Facebook page, may have seen last week that there was a post regarding a pretty dramatic rescue from some high water involving Sergeant Iger. And he's here tonight with his family, his wife, Kason, his daughter Rose, his daughter Mio. And he's going to be awarded tonight the Police Service Cross. And I'd like to read a letter that I've written to Sergeant Iger. On July 9th, 2021, at approximately 6:30 PM, he responded to Parker Bridge Road at the Columbia Town Line on a report of the roadway being flooded and a person disabled in a vehicle in the road. Upon your arrival, you found the roadway completely overtaken with rushing water. A witness pointed out the vehicle, which had been washed off the road due to the force of the water. He went to the flooded roadway on foot toward the vehicle. He told me that he got up to about his shins, and in the next step he took, he was up to his neck. So, the vehicle, which turned out to be a pickup truck, was almost fully submerged with only the top portion of the vehicle visible. He observed a female occupant standing in the doorwell of the vehicle with water up to her shoulders. You shouted to get to her attention, but she was not able to hear you due to the sound made by the water. You began wading toward her and very quickly found yourself in water up to your neck. You swam to the vehicle where you quickly checked for any other occupants. Soon after, two Connecticut state troopers arrived, who were being driven through the water in a privately owned Humvee. You and the troopers worked together to rescue the woman using ropes as you guided her through the high water to safety. Your actions were both heroic and commendable while exposing yourself to danger. Therefore, it is my privilege to present you with the Police Service Cross Award, which is awarded to officers who distinguish themselves by an act of bravery while exposing themselves to the risk of physical injury. Congratulations and keep up the great work.
Thank you, Jonathan.
Do you guys mind if I just make a quick comment?
And this is a ribbon award. It's above what the normal commendation typically is. This is a ribbon award that he can wear as part of his uniform.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Russ. Good job.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Go ahead.
Just one quick comment. I want you to be here. No problem. It's very nice to be recognized. I would like to point out, as a supervisor, I am continually surprised by the courage and the professionalism all the officers in our department show. Every day on their calls, every call they go to often takes a courageous act that's not usually recognized. So, it's often when I'm reviewing the reports, the videos, it's astounding to see the skill, the compassion, and the professionalism of all of our officers, our dispatchers, everyone who works fire department as well. You know, we all work well together. I also wanted to comment that I met with the owner of the Humvee in the call and his wife, and we gave them challenge coins and patches, and also with the two troopers. One of the troopers, Kevin Crosby, is from town. Two nights ago, I met up with him. He was given challenge coins for him and both the other troopers as well. So, we recognize their contributions. And Chief Myers was there as well, and Officer Anderson. So, it was really a team effort. It really was. And it's nice to be recognized. Everyone in the town of Coventry should be very proud of the Police Department. I'm often just astounded by the professionalism and the compassion they show. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't think I'm going to read that.
All right. For the audiences, citizens, we have Marty Milkovich. If you want to go to the podium, give us your name and address, please.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Marty Milkovich from 856 Dunn Road. And good evening, council members and folks in the audience and those at home. First, I'd like to say I'm looking forward to hearing about the change in the sale, I mean, in the movement of the transfer station that will allow the softball fields to be created and for the football fields to be maintained. Later on the agenda is, you'll see a copy of a letter I wrote a week and a half ago on that subject. And I think it's important for you to listen to the volunteers who have supported the softball program and the football program over the years. You know, they deserve to be listened to and their ideas listened to. I'd also like to say that I would like to comment on an important infrastructure matter that involves the town. I think over the last week or so, with all the flooding and, as was just mentioned, that heroic rescue from a flooded road shows the importance of access on our roads and how we really depend on having our roads in a state of good repair. And I have to say, I don't think that our roads really are in a state of good repair. I know later on the agenda tonight, there's some folks here from Gardner Terrace that are going to talk a little bit about their concerns about the condition of their road. You know, I think we've gotten behind on maintaining our roads, and I think it's something we really need and the council needs to address. You can put off preparing things for a while, but as an example, if you decide to forego oil changes in your car in order to save a little money, when the engine finally goes and you have to borrow money to fix it, that's really not the way to do it. You're going to pay more and you're going to pay interest on top of it. So, we really need to maintain our roads now and not, you know, borrow money over time to catch up, which is what we've done in the past. So, I strongly encourage the council to consider doing something to keep up the maintenance of our roads and to get them in a state of good repair. Thanks.
Next, I have Craig Marcus.
I'm Craig Marcus, 129 Gardner Tavern Road. I'm here talking about the proposal to chip seal our road. One of the main things I'd like to bring up, that the average cost of the houses on Gardner Tavern Road is over $300,000. I know my taxes, and I'm sure everybody else's, are over $6,000 a year just on the real estate alone. Gardner Tavern was chosen because the town of Coventry, Town Hall, the fire station, the school, and the police station all realized how much money they would save by converting to natural gas. The CNG decided that the best way to put the natural gas line from 44, which was where the main line was, to all the town buildings was to go through Gardner Tavern. Because of that, they've, we, for the last few years, have had the road ripped up. We've, you know, had many times when I've had to sit there for five, 10 minutes waiting for the tractors to move, which all of us in Gardner Tavern have put up with over these years. Now, I've lived there for 23 years. When the road was put in, it was fine. At the end of Gardner Tavern, you have Lewis Hill, I'm sorry, Eastview, and then Lewis Hill. The end of Eastview was so bad. And I remember talking to somebody at the Department of Public Works, and they said it was listed as one of the worst roads in Coventry. They redid it, and it's beautiful. I mean, it's nice and smooth. My main problem is I sit at my desk in my house from 7:30 in the morning, and I sit there, and I watch women, mothers pushing their babies in strollers. I watch dogs. I watch joggers. I watch runners. There are literally 30 to 40 people a day, a day, seven days a week, that I could count that use that road other than driving a car. I lived on a road that was chip sealed. When my nieces were very young, we used to go play shuffleboard out in the street above my parents' house in Mansfield. And it was beautiful. And this was a small road, Thompson Road in Mansfield, only about four or five houses on it. And it was beautiful. And then one day, they chip sealed it. That lasted for about six years. It was just redone again this year, but they did it properly. And of course, my nieces used to call the road the Ouchie Stones. They were very young at the time, and that was the end of playing, at the end of my parents' road. The problem with this chip sealing, not only is it bad for all the people that use the road, anybody with a white car or any car for that matter, the oil gets on your car. It costs money to get rid of it. It gets in your garage. It gets on your feet. It gets in your house, on your hardwood floors, on your carpet. Who pays for all of this? It is a temporary, it's not even a fix. It's a temporary something. I don't know what it is, but it doesn't work in a neighborhood like this. It might work in a neighborhood that's had a dirt road or a non-paved road or millings. But in a neighborhood that has had a paved road, that was chosen to be torn up, and we've had to live with this for all of these years, I think the right thing to do is to mill the road and repave it properly, and let's have it last 30 years. I have articles and articles, which I have sent to the town council. John, I believe I sent you. Julie, I know I've sent you. And basically, the name of the article is "To Neighborhood, It's Road of Ruin." Last week, I read this to everybody, and it's long, and it's just, you know. It talks about a neighborhood that was deceived, and it says, "The residents have requested the Highway Department to repave the street with asphalt and will request that the selectmen agree on Tuesday night." I mean, they go on. Chip seal can last eight years. Lifespan of an asphalt road is about 30 years. It's just, it's a temporary, not even a fix. I don't believe it's a fix. It's going to cause more problems than it fixed. Residents say the granite chips and tar get stuck in the bottom of their shoes, gets dragged into their homes, staining their carpets, scratching their hardwood force. Parents felt that the children were perfectly safe paving, playing on the street before it was treated with chip seal. It has made a worse condition than what it was before. They put this on to try to preserve the street when it actually backfired. Residents say if the town had asked them if they wanted the road treated, they would have told them no. I happen to own 11 houses in the town of Mansfield that I rent out. So, I'm very familiar with driveways and chip sealing and damages to houses. You ever try renting to UConn students? I'll tell you about damage. So, the damage that is going to happen, it's there. It's not if it will. It will. It will cause problems for every single person on this road. I don't think that the average person on Gardner Tavern or Lewis Hill or the other Ripley Hill Road, A, understand what chip sealing is, know that chip sealing is going to be done. I mean, yes, I saw a little tiny thing in the town newsletter saying, oh, here's the roads that are going to be chip sealed. Well, I think what should have been done is a letter should have been sent to every resident on these roads and said, look, this is what chip sealing is. This is why we're going to do it. Here are the pros. Here are the cons. And given the residents an opportunity to say how they feel. I think that nobody on Gardner Tavern or Lewis Hill or Ripley Hill, for that matter, would be happy with the value of their homes. And I guarantee you, this will bring the value of a home down by doing this. Nobody buying a $400,000 home wants to be driving on an oiled road. You don't see many dirt driveways in $400,000 homes. They're all paved. Some of these driveways are so long, you know it costs them $25,000 to pave that driveway. They do it for a reason. This is our neighborhood, and the people in this neighborhood, I don't believe are aware. I just think that if everybody really knew, every single resident and people that, it's not only Gardner Tavern. These are not the only people that are using our road. They come from Lewis Hill. They come from Ripley Hill. They come from all over. I mean, we have a great trick-or-treating neighborhood. Before COVID, people used to truck their kids down. I've counted 200 trick-or-treaters on Halloween. I've handed out 200 bags of candy before. That's a lot of trick-or-treaters. That's a lot of people walking on Gardner Tavern Road. That's a lot of trick-or-treaters. Children that are going to get hurt, they're going to trip on their costumes. You ever see what that granite does to a child's knee? You could end up in the hospital. That's how bad it is. And you can't stitch it. These kind of cuts, it turns your knees into hamburger. There's nothing to stitch. And these are scars that will last forever. So, I have to say, I mean, there's article after article that goes to show how bad this really is. And in the long run, we really do not save money. It's going to cost us more in the long run.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, I have Joseph Jankowski.
Hello, I'm Joseph Jankowski, 3899 South Street. I'm the president of the Booth &amp; Dimmick Memorial Library Board of Trustees, and I'm here to share with the town council and with everyone in Coventry some good news about our public library. As almost everyone knows, Coventry resident Sandra Stave made an incredibly generous gift of $75,000, pledged toward the renovation and improvement of our library in the hopes that it would inspire our community to step up and help to fill in the gap between what we passed in referendum toward that renovation and what was requested and estimated by the Library and Renovation Committee. And we did. The Board of Trustees and the library had a mini golf event a couple of years ago. That money was pledged toward the renovation. The last two years' membership drives were pledged toward the renovation. And because of Sandra's generosity and her inspiration, we had a fundraising drive centering around Library Giving Day in April. Well, Library Mini Golf was just under $3,000. Our library membership funds over the last few years, just under $6,000. But our community came together, and donations in excess of $45,000 were received. Those checks were presented and are now ready for the renovation to begin. And the Library Renovation and Improvement Committee, a committee of this town council, will be working toward our eventual groundbreaking. The total supplemental fundraising is now in excess of $129,000. And I want to thank our very generous community for supporting our public library. But wait, there's more. I have more good news about our library. Starting on July 6th, the COVID plan had an easing of the restrictions that our library was operating under. Throughout this pandemic, our library has been able to provide services, library services to our community. We have had curbside service, something that we did occasionally pre-COVID and now has been taken advantage of by hundreds of people every week. But the easing of restrictions in July included freeing up small group seating, the seating at the computer stations that are used by our citizens. The restrooms are now open. And although we will have, we continue programming. Program is still mostly virtual, using Zoom. We have hopes of some outdoor programming. Unfortunately, our July weather pattern has not really cooperated with outdoor programming. And unless there is a change in direction based on our public health officials, our plan is for a full reopening on August 3rd with a return to our full pre-pandemic hours. And that'll be a day of celebration for all of us that our library will be open in the hours that we were before. In closing, I also have one other personal note. The end of June saw the retirement of librarian Barbara Hall. Barbara was a librarian at Booth &amp; Dimmick Memorial Library for more than 30 years. And in all of those years, in a variety of roles, wearing lots of hats in our library. She served our community and probably knows more people through the library than anyone else. She is, as far as I know, the last person who was still employed in the library, who worked in the library prior to the 1989 expansion. That's the last time our library was expanded and renovated. And so, I'm going to give her credit for being part of all of the renovation because she was there for the planning of our next renovation coming up this year. So, I hope that everyone can celebrate this good news about our public library and look forward to our full reopening on August 3rd and eventually coming together in our newly renovated library as soon as we can get that job completed and enjoy our library together. Thank you.
Thank you for all the good news, Joe. Kimberly Bollier, did you want to speak? Kimberly Bollier, did you want to speak?
I do.
Please state your name and address.
I'm John Hayes. I'm the next one here.
John Hayes, 98 Gardner Tavern. Craig laid it all out. But as we watched and we watch what happens on Gardner Tavern, it's also Windswept is added, all of the, all of, as well as Carver, the people that are walking around. I'm blessed to be the, a teacher, so I'm home during the summers. Forty is is a low estimate for the number of people because I stop, they stop, talk, wave. But the number of people who this oil and chip will change their lives will be four or five streets of very angry people. In addition, there's been six, maybe seven houses on Gardner Tavern that have been sold in the past year. These are people that have bought at the absolute height of prices. And when they see this change, there will be a reaction. I guarantee you that. There will be a reaction to see what they're on. Craig couldn't get all of them here because, well, it's summertime, people are on vacation, we have a whole bunch of new neighbors. That if it happens, if you do it, and I too have lived on, uh, a chip sealed road, and it is not what you think it is. It is a mess. And it gets redone. You need to really be long sighted, not short sighted. And then you'd have to deal with the question, why does this chip seal end when you get into the larger houses, when it gets over to Eastview? Why does it end here? Because the people that walk on Eastview also walk on Gardner Tavern. They walk on Windswept. The the circle going around Windswept through the cut through, through the the woods out to Eastview and then back up, you see people out there all the time, more and more and more. You really, really, not just for the property owners on Gardner Tavern, but for the community well-being and for the thoughtfulness of those people in that neighborhood, really need to consider what that road represents. And it and it is part of the quality of life that we as citizens expect you to maintain is our quality of life as as community leaders that you've taken an oath as taking your office. That's your role. We couldn't get the number of people here that we would have liked to because we're just getting to meet them. But as as we've, we've met them, I I can tell you just from the personalities that I've met, they're not going to be pleased, new new residents of Coventry, if you make this decision, this short sighted decision. And as Forrest Gump would say, that's all I have to say about that.
Anyone else want to speak? Can I have a motion to move up our discussion? The fire department?
8D.
8D. Can I please add a motion to move up 8D? Yes, Matt Senior.
Move to, uh, move up agenda item 8D, 2122-4, consideration possible action, increase the capital lease authorization up to the top of the agenda, please.
Thank you, John. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Welcome, Bud.
I know you guys.
Would it be appropriate to also ask that we give a little bit of 8G to follow up?
Yes. You want to make a motion, Matt, to move up 8G to immediately follow our discussions after 8D?
We do move to move up 8G, 2122-7, consideration possible action, authorization to execute settlement agreement for dissolution of North Coventry Volunteer Fire Department and creation of honorary member status. A second.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
So you don't have to go back.
All right, so.
So to set the stage, you have a memo from Amanda, um, which is provided by information given to us by the department. We had a budget number for a fire truck. By the time the fire department, uh, specked out in more detail what their needs were and price increases from budgetary time to to now, it increased dramatically and, um, and if we take longer to to make a decision, it increases again next month. So with that, uh, I'll let them talk about the the truck and the deed and then I'll get into financing options.
So ideally, this piece of apparatus that we're looking to purchase is replacing ET318 on this. Right now, at the backside of the of the town on South Street, um, that piece of equipment that we're getting, uh, we're actually designing it so we can actually use it as a rescue pumper. So that way we can put our, we have hydraulic, spare hydraulic tools and that stuff. So we'll actually have hydraulic tools down here on this end of town. It'll also be in a, a closer vicinity to, for Route 6 as a backup piece going over there. And, uh, so the compartment space on it, it's also designed, been designed to, because of the being on the backside of the lake, get able to be better maneuver around the lakeside and in that area and stuff. The apparatus that we would like to go with with the Pierce has a, um, turning radius of a, of 60 degrees on its front, uh, suspension, giving us much more maneuverability. It's actually a shorter truck than the other apparatuses that we put into us. So, uh, so we're sitting here looking to.
Okay, anybody have any questions at this time?
Eventually, my questions will be about the financial piece and about the need for the trucks.
So, uh, for the training for that equipment?
Yep.
Like the hydraulic?
Yep.
Stuff? Is that something is, I guess, is that, is that a move point now with the way things are arranged and the?
Yeah, everybody, we just, we just had a training night, uh, and we actually went out of town to an auto junkyard.
Sure.
They were, everybody was trained on the tool.
They got to cut some?
We're all working beautifully together.
All right, awesome. Well, it's good to hear. I just wanted to make sure, you know, because I know how important it is to know what you're doing. That stuff, so you don't create more problems than you're causing, you know, than you're solving. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? Yep.
Is this a brand new tanker truck?
Yes.
What what's the life expectancy of it, of the new one?
Uh, so, um, uh, life expectancy by NFPA standards is 25 years. So this, this piece of apparatus would meet that, the the structural frame is is good for 50 years through through the Pierce. All the other units have a warranty on them, um, of after 10 years or something like that, but they're, they're designed for 25 years.
We've been extending these to 30-ish. Sometimes a lot more. This is a 91?
93.
93. This is the second, that we had a 91 and a 93.
Yep.
Richard?
I know in the past, we've, we've purchased or acquired used equipment. It's not.
We did that with the ladder truck. That was the only thing we did because of the funding. It was, and ironically, it fell in our lap at that time. It was, it was a no-brainer to to.
That, that would have been a million dollar or 1.2 million dollar truck.
That was a demonstration model, though.
No, no, the ladder truck was, the ladder truck was Rocky Hill.
Rocky, it was a used.
It was used, but it was 10 or 15 years old.
It's 2002.
Um, and we got it, I don't remember exactly, like 200,000 or something?
300.
300.
300, 300.
But a new one's like 1.2, 1.3 million, probably today, 1.5 million. So it called the question whether we could afford a ladder truck at all. And this gave us the flexibility with the truck that we also knew the people in Rocky Hill and the maintenance that it had. So it was very, very reliable. And the number of calls that it had was.
So just to give you the reliability, um, our two new issue once was ET418, a Spartan. And our rescue, uh, 218 is also a Spartan. The, the ladder truck is a Pierce. So since we've had it in 2016, that truck's been out of service for 22 days and that's it. When we talk about the rescue truck that's been out of service for 72 days of non-use, that's a 2011 piece of equipment. And the 2017 was out 62 days so far, both those Spartans. So the, the build on those things, we've had electrical issues and ongoing and still ongoing with other units where that Pierce is, um, you know.
Just about a piece of equipment?
Yeah.
Well, it was one of the options while we're shopping. We didn't believe it would suit our needs, but the history that we had with that manufacturer. That's why we, uh, kind of like the Pierce. The Seagrave's a nice piece of apparatus, but again, uh, it's priced out of our, what we is believe is fair. Came in at about $730,000 for that piece of apparatus. So the Pierce we're looking at is 599. While we went to confirm that price, they had indicated their price increase is scheduled for August 11th. I guess the, um.
It's already increased. That's a different one, Colin.
Yep. The aluminums and the metals are, uh, experience the same price increases that we've all heard about with wood. So the longer we wait, the more it's going to cost. We've had proven, uh, positive experiences with the, with the Pierce. So to confirm the price, we got, it was originally 600 and, uh, got jumped to 617 because of some tariffs that had been implemented. So that's why we're asking for the increase. And then, um, out of the discussion with Amanda and through Amanda, which, uh, came up with the two options for your consideration.
Any other questions? Can I have a, Lisa, do you have a question?
Um, I have a question because I'm not sure what the motion. So it looks like there are two options to consider that have to do with increasing the additional funds for lease purchasing. But the town manager is recommending taking the money out of CNRF and stuff? Am I understanding that correctly?
No, there's, well, there's several options of financing. Uh, one, if you wanted to, you could just take money out of CNRF. We are lease purchasing this and the plan is for 10 years. I recommend it to Amanda, that way you go to 12 years, which would just extend out, but well within the life of this apparatus. But it would bring us back to a closer, uh, budget and then you would only need to appropriate a little bit of money, uh, from CNRF to make up the difference. So, and you have all sorts of options. You can redirect them to, to go back and cut the budget and, uh, you can, um, choose to supplement the extra 117,000. And we only lease purchased what was in the budget. Or you can, um, stretch out the length.
Matt Senior?
So the motion that's here does not specify which alternative we choose? Is that to be determined later or is?
No, that's, the motion basically.
There's motions below the options?
It's the second motion.
Yeah.
Okay. So I'd like to make the first motion for the town council to authorize an additional 117,000 dollars in lease purchasing for the fiscal year 2022 capital purchase of a fire tanker truck as described.
I'll second that, but I have a question, which is discussion.
Do you want to speak to your motion, Matt?
Well, I think that listening to Bud and Jim, I'm very confident that we will make good use of this equipment. I agree 100% that things are increasing, you know, and that we should move quickly. So, um, my only consideration is whether we do the 10 or 12 year lease. I'm not, you know, bickering about the doing, I think we should move forward and make the purchase.
Lisa?
And so in the motion, we don't have to say how we're doing it.
There's going to be a second.
There's a second motion.
There's a second motion at the bottom of the page, so.
I didn't know if those.
Any further discussion? All right, all those.
Should we discuss the, is the 10 or 12 year going to be anything we talked about tonight?
That's the next thing.
The next motion.
Trying to do it in one step at a time.
We're discussing the motion on the table first and then put another motion on the table if you feel like.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. So everybody in favor of the motion for the town council to authorize an additional 117,000 dollars in lease purchasing for fiscal year 2022 capital purchase of a fire tanker truck, please say aye.
Aye.
Can I say this fire?
Unanimous, okay.
So does anybody have thoughts? I mean, I understand John's, uh, recommendation and it would be at a, a nice low rate of 2.5%. I typically wouldn't like to go beyond 10 years for a lease, but, um, we also are looking at a lot of other, um, capital projects that are going to be adding to more of our capital debt. So I guess I could go along with the 12 years if that's, if everyone else thinks that's a good idea.
I'd be comfortable with the 12 years based on the life of these pieces of equipment.
Yeah. Comfortable with the 12 years based on the company money.
Yeah, well, that helps.
The cost of money seems like a reasonable cost. So we don't know what the actual amount of lease payments will be, John?
No, we have to get everything lined up and then we do competitive, uh.
Right.
Quotations, uh, we usually get about 10 or 12.
What's a safe number?
Well, two and a half, two and a half percent is what we're, we're budgeting. I think it may come in less, Amanda wouldn't let me change it, but, um.
That's why the motion is worded as.
No, the motion's, the motion's worded that if you take option one, we need 13,000. If we take option two, we need, uh, 3,500 to meet this year's debt payment.
So it'd be up to that amount, actually?
Up to that.
Right.
Not that amount, up to that amount.
Okay.
So that the percentage, if the rent interest rate is, comes in lower?
It'd be less.
We don't have to spend as much as it might as in the motion.
So it wouldn't come out of CNRF?
But that's the way.
Only have the way you spend.
This is worded as depending what option, whether you choose option one or option two, you plug in either the 13,000 or the 3,500.
Is it okay if I go, Lisa, or do you want to do it? Do you want to make the motion? I'll do it if you don't want to.
Oh, I can make the motion.
We're going to do option two.
So did we?
Option two.
That was my next question. Are we in consensus on option two?
I'm, I'm in support.
So I move to authorize up to an additional 3,500 dollars in lease payments for fiscal year 2022 to be funded by CNRF.
So I think we're increasing our debt budget as opposed to our lease payment. Is that right?
That's why I was getting confused.
Yes. Yes, we're increasing our debt budget.
But this is how it should be worded?
Yes.
Okay.
Because that's the lease payment is referring back to that service.
All right. Any questions?
Was it second?
Yeah, Richard's ended.
And, um, we didn't identify, and we don't have to, I don't think, where the money is going to come from yet, do we?
Um, this motion says CNRF.
Okay, what's, why didn't, okay, I didn't hear that as part of the motion.
She did, she did, she did. I heard it. All right.
So it's up to 3,500 dollars out of CNRF to pay for the increase in the debt budget of 3,500 dollars.
But that's an alternative. You could do one and a half if you wish, your consensus.
I understand that. Okay. Always move one and a half over to CNRF later if you need to.
Yep.
All right, anybody in favor of the motion to authorize up to 3,500 dollars from CNRF for the fiscal year 2022, please say aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you.
What are the North Council?
Yep.
This will take over probably at least a year.
Yeah.
All right, so next on our agenda, we're going to discuss 8G, 21 slash 22 dash 7, consideration possible action, authorization to execute settlement agreement for dissolution of North Coventry Volunteer Fire Department and creation of honorary member status. Bud, did you want to speak to this or just?
So ideally, um, the, the agreement was drafted up. It was sent to the Board of, of North Coventry. Nothing had gotten back for quite a while and then I reiterated to them, we'd like to finalize with whatever's going on. Some people responded. I made the corrections of what they responded to, um, into this agreement. And one of the things that some of the members were concerned about was. And one of the things that some of the members were concerned about was trying to incorporate past members, life members, I should say, into somehow being part of TCFD. So, we came up with this draft policy of charter honorary member, lifetime member, and an honorary member. Lifetime members that can only be given to a person who is actually a TCFD member. So, a charter honorary member was looked at to lifetime past chiefs who are lifetime members to be, they can apply a letter to come to me as a fire chief. We have yet to look at an application, but we'd like to know information of who they are, because there are some that are hardly ever around. And, you know, that comes to us, the fire board looks at it, and we move it to the town council for final approval. As far as honorary members, that can be distinguished members of the community that have helped with the fire department. You know, case in point, Joan Lewis did a lot for North Coventry and we made her an honorary member for North Coventry. So, that's, it can also be past members of the departments. And all that would take is five members of the town of Coventry Fire Department to say, we feel this person should be an honorary member. It would go to the fire board, the fire board would look at it, and we would move from there. As far as the settlement agreement goes, the two proponents of this lifetime, this honorary member stuff and everything else like that, had a chance to look at that. They were quite happy with the way it was drafted and brought up. I've already, just from being on the agenda, I've already been contacted by a past chief of CBFA. And he was like, well, is this just for North Coventry because it's part, it's being referenced in this document? And if you actually read this, it says, this is a town of Coventry policy. It's not a part, it's just referenced into this document. So, this would be a town of Coventry policy as we move forward then. So, the agreement, which still, I would say is 99.9% ready to go as long as the North Coventry Board finally says yes when they meet, because they haven't really met. I would think if we can, if you guys could give John the power to...
If I could interrupt, I think I'm forwarding it because it's given to you. We haven't run it through legal. And we haven't really spent, there's a few things I have concerns on there. So, you know, I think it's a contract, we can talk about it in an executive session, but you know, you're making future councils, binding future councils since there's some decisions with the language.
Sure.
So, I think we need to...
So, we're not going to talk about the language tonight? We should do it in executive session?
I think a few things there, but I didn't want to, we have to start somewhere. And Bud's right, there's really two separate agreements, two separate things. But I think, I guess I was thinking that this could be referred to one of the committees, which would be the typical thing. But I also would like our town attorney to at least look at the settlement agreement.
That makes sense. There were some issues that I was going to talk about, so it's better if we do it in an executive session.
Do we need a motion to send it to stare or just a...
I agree.
Chairman?
Whichever.
What does everybody think? Because I almost just table it and give our attorney a chance, and I think that the seven of us can discuss it again. I don't necessarily think that we need to send it to a committee to come back again.
I would just be waiting for the...
It would be more expeditions to, in my opinion.
I move to continue this item.
Second.
I think you have to say some date certain or something in the motion.
Continue the next meeting.
To the next one. All right, so, all those...
Well, under discussion, I think that the idea of honorary lifetime membership is good. So, I read through that and I didn't see any relation with that. It's not part of the...
It's just referenced.
Settlement agreement, right. Yeah, I understand.
Because as a dissolution, they wanted to make sure that it would still be alive or whatever.
Yep.
You know.
All right, so all those in favor of continuing this item to our next meeting, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. Any further questions for Bud or Jimmy at this point since they're here?
We can't ask about the language now, so.
Ask what?
We'll give John our questions.
Yeah, we're going to talk to John in the executive session, so.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks for looking at the subject. Appreciate it.
Richard has a question?
Yeah.
I'd just like to, at this point, just move up 6F4.
Do I have a second?
You're going to say what that is so people know?
Chip sealing concerns Gardner Tavern Road.
Anybody want a second? Richard's question.
Second.
Thank you, Matt, who's here. All those in favor of moving up item 6F4, chip seal concerns Gardner Tavern Road, please say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Okay, this was under our town manager who's going to speak to this. No Bill Will, no Mark?
No. You know, I had a later data, if you want to bring them in, that's fine, but Mark's on vacation and Bill has been trying to run the show on storm events and it's been a lot of hours. So, you have Mark's memo. Just for the public, chip seal is the primary road treatment that we have had in this town. They're absolutely right, it's a seven a year maximum life. But what it does in that timeframe is it saves the base. Like a rotten tooth, if you have a crack in a tooth, the tooth rots. So, if you put a cap on a tooth, you are extending the life of that tooth. Chip seal is a cap on the road. What it does is it saves the shape of the road because water doesn't get through and you don't get all the flooding and so forth. So, it's a treatment, it's an advanced treatment. And it depends what size stone you have to have this type of issue that they raise. And I shared with the council some roads that we have done recently. We're using a smaller stone called a 1/4 inch stone versus 3/8 or larger stone. And the 3/8, the 1/4 inch stone, after one year, it's really settled in and you really have a hard time distinguishing it from an asphalt road. We've also done several other things to lessen the annoyances of chip seal during the process. And that involves kind of washing the stone first, so you have less dust, which was an issue they raised, but an issue that we have concern of. And also, we can do a fog seal, which after you're done here, actually put a fog hood over, which helps seal the stone in. We also have started sweeping a little faster to pick up the loose stone. So, the 1/4 inch stone, I mean, in terms of, we don't choose a road treatment based on the value of a house. You know, and we don't believe that it impacts the neighborhood. And I went up and drove around just to see how our roads were doing. Recent chip seals, and I would direct people to go look at Satari Drive, Isaiah Drive, Nor Drive, Heather Lane, which the houses are probably $500,000 houses. Those are all chip sealed 2.5 years ago. Merrill Road was done last year. Ripley Hill was a different treatment. We wouldn't use that in a residential neighborhood. That's a rubberized chip seal, gives it better traction. So, why do you surface road and not take any, why do you not just do nothing? The purpose, again, is that you have to get the, keep the water off of getting in that base. Once you get that water, it goes quickly, you get running, it washes the fines, just like we've water washed out Broadway. Water is evil to roads. And you got to keep that water out as much as you can. That's why we're crack seal too. So, Eastview Drive, they already kind of mentioned it, that had a bad base. We actually had an argument with the contractor at that time. You know, that was probably 1990. And the town had, was changing to a consulting engineering and we had a gap where we didn't have an engineer. And Jacobson Engineering came and made them do some repairs to the base as we got further up Eastview Drive. And the reason that work was done was it had total pavement failure, which at that point, you have no choice but total reconstruction, which the prices you have here aren't even dealing with total reconstruction. And in that timeframe, we had another subdivision that we had to go in and do total reconstruction too, because again, we didn't, the town didn't have a good inspection program back then to watch the contractors while they're doing it. So, every road has a different option and a series of options. So, the options that were spelled out for Gardner Tavern do not include that train technique, because you have to have enough work to get that in. And that's when the bases failed and you have all these ruts and the shape of the road's wrong. Gardner Tavern, the shape of the road is still correct. As to the trench, I'll start with that and then go through the options. So, the reason the gas company chose that road was they could provide gas to customers and a lot of neighbors up there have changed over to the gas. So, the gas company, CNG, was only supposed to do a temporary patch, and that's what's there. Now, that has to be removed and replaced or corrected. So, that's the first thing. That was supposed to happen last year or the year before. We've just been so busy with other road work, we haven't gotten, haven't had the staff to get these things done. So, that's still the step one. And that has to happen this fall. My preference would typically would not be to do chip seal right away, although that trench is this little, so it's not that big. But we are going to be chip sealing Ripley Hill. We're going to be paving because we have pavement failure down towards the end. We're going to pave and then we're going to chip seal the rest of it. Chip seal probably over the pavement. So, we're going to have chip seal in our neighborhood. So, it may be that we'll look, talk to the company to see whether that little trench would matter that much. I mean, we often shim a few things. Other treatments, we have to start messing with everyone's driveway, because you start raising the road and the lip on a driveway is, and every catch basin has to be raised too, because you start adding that and the water won't get into catch basin and water will go into the driveways instead of staying in the road. So, the prices you have for four options, start talking about the other appears that you need.
Before you go to the other options, I had some questions about the chip seal that we've been doing, because I know we've been doing this for years. And you sent those two videos, which were great, and I had never actually seen a video on chip sealing before, so it was very informative. But have we had real complaints from, you know, any of the roads that you're talking about, you know, in the timeframe after they were chip sealed?
There's...
I mean, I know there's some inconvenience.
There's some inconvenience for the first few days. At the end...
In the video, it seemed like it was seven to 14 days, so something like that.
It takes a while to set and it depends on the traffic. The more traffic, the more it's set in.
On the video, they just swept it right away.
No, you don't. We used to wait about a week. Now, we're trying to do a more rapid, kind of a three day, and then we'll come back again. And so, the double sweep versus, but you kind of watch it and see how it is. But as, the process is that as it gets packed down, the loose stone kind of goes to the gutter line.
Yeah.
In terms of cars, probably every other year, we have an issue where somebody complains about a car thing. Typically, it does very little damage to that there. There is some oil damage that sometimes needs to be wiped out, but typically, it's somebody driving too fast. You know, you're supposed to, especially in the first few days, 15 miles an hour is the maximum speed. And if you're doing 40, you got a problem. So, a lot of speeding and the signs are up to warn people about that. But we've been chip sealing here for 50 years.
I did drive down to the roads that you suggested and you're right, it's pretty much, it looks like an asphalt road, pretty much, so.
So...
Right now, I know it's two years later, but...
I mean, the issue is doing nothing is the worst of all options, because then you lose the total, you lose the relevance, total reconstruction. And then, you're talking about bonding and a lot more. So, yes, I agree, this is a, you know, whatever six to eight years depends on a lot of other conditions, including how much we plow. We use a carbide blade and move some of the surfaces on the crown of the road. But if you're doing nothing, you have issues of water, you have issues of the pavement actually gets smoother, loses traction, which actually on a hill is not good. So, do people love chip seal? No, as I said to you in my memos, it's not loved, but I think people understand it beats the alternative of having massive potholes and ruts. And that's what will come with that road. That's what will come with it a few years. The road life is 20 years at the most. This is 22 years, I think, without any real treatments. So...
I didn't mean to interrupt, but I had never asked questions about chip sealing in town specifically, so I wanted to get some idea.
You know, I wrote, so while you have like, a couple of years ago, Grand Hill, it was a little wet, and they came back and they, at their cost, put a second layer of chip stone down. And it's holding up rather well now. But that one was one that didn't go as well as it should, and the company remedied it. So, the options that Public Works looked at was, option one was a fine mill with a 3/4 inch tune and a shim. So, you mill off a little bit and then you add a little bit down. So, that, with that, you have to do all the driveways, have a 15 to 19 year old life. There's routine crack sealing, cutting and patching as you go through.
When we're talking about driveway work, do you have any idea of cost estimates on things like that?
Typical driveway is about 1,500, it's 1,500 to 2,000.
Do we know how many houses there are on this road? And there's a lot of it.
Yeah, 30-ish.
Do you guys know? No, you guys know.
And it depends whether we do it or whether we contract it. So, the price will vary dramatically. We often try to do that because it's a premium cost for a contractor to come in for such a little job.
Sure.
But we frankly haven't had time to do that much. Full subdivision, we probably try to bring the company in. But it's a small roller that you need and it's a lot of trips to the pavement plant because of heat. You can't, you can only do a few at a time on a load, so you have to go and wait a couple hours in a line at the asphalt plant, because you can't put it down while it's still the temperature. So, that's 241,000. So, that's like 241,492 dollars for that option.
There's 45 or 60,000 dollars in driveway work, though.
Could be, I would need to press that out for sure, but...
30 at the lowest?
Yep, probably. Again, if we do it, it's mostly material cost. Like, I'd have to look at tonnage. It's not a lot of tonnage, but it's time. Option two would be an inch and a half overlay finish pavement. Again, you have to do driveways. We would have to do some prep work and on top of that, otherwise you have a fucking big cracking that comes up through. So, if you have a stronger pavement by going through a thicker depth of pavement, so you get the structural depth. But we have to go through and make sure that everything there is kind of ready for that, otherwise, whatever cracks and defects that you have will reflect up through. So, that would be about 11 to 15 year life. And that would be $135,000. And then, there's a process where you can actually do a semi-seal, which kind of do another treatment on top of it. So, the only, the only time we've done that, we did that on, actually, semi-seal, you put down like a chip seal and then you pave over it. And we did that on...
Roads in front of the Public Works facility.
No, no, that's a whole different, that's a cold end. We did that on Richmond. So Richmond Road, and that was due to structural strength. The road didn't, we didn't trust the base in that road at all, so we needed to get, chip seal has some advantage of, again, take it at the cap of the tooth, it has real structure to it where asphalt is kind of melds and moves. So on Richmond, we put down a chip seal and then paved over on purpose and that's called a semi-seal. And I think it's actually spelled S-A-M-I.
What's the purpose of that?
It gives, it gives structural strength to a road with a bad base. So I don't think the base on this road's bad. I mean, if it were, you'd see ruts, you know, kind of these wave tire ruts on the side where the side has sunk. That's indicative of a couple of things. Needs curtain drains, so the fines have washed out, that's one of the reasons. So a lot of our old rural roads, you see that first, you see the ruts on the side. But when you have a good crown, the water gets off the road. Option three is called a cape seal, which is another version of a, you use a three H chip seal and then you micro pave over it. Not common in Connecticut, Danbury uses it. That's a little bit cheaper, a hundred eleven thousand dollars. And option four is what our former Public Works Director Mark Kiefer talked about, which is a quarter inch chip seal, which again, smaller stone. And specifically, we started using that in residential neighborhoods. And if you go look at Sotary, Isaiah, Nor or Heather, again, that was done several years ago and you have a hard time telling the difference of it. And that was in that shape probably a couple of months afterwards. And, you know, that's thirty-one thousand for thirty-seven. So we would be.
And that's good for how long?
Again, five to eight years. Depends a lot on weather and other things. But that, that gets you, and then at that point, you decide again whether, you know, what the right treatment is. And so, you know, two hundred forty-one thousand is the equivalent of over point two mils in taxes. Our total road budget for just the taxes, our total road budget is three hundred thousand. And then we had three hundred thousand from the state's of six hundred thousand. So that would, that, you know, far exceeds any money that we have available.
Then we have bonding.
You'd have to bond it. Then you'd have the interest on top of it for however long.
Lisa Thomas? Has Gardner Tavern been chip sealed in the past?
No. It's only had cracks here. It was slated before the gas project to be chip sealed?
Yeah.
So you chip seal it and then five to eight years down the road, do you just re-chip seal it? Or do you have any more work that typically needs to be done?
Often you chip seal it again, but the answer is, it depends, it depends. Roads have a life and every road has its own treatment. So at some point, you will have to do total reconstruction. And that's, you know, Northfield subdivision, and we bonded for that because again, the road shape and how water's flowing, what other issues are going on, that dictates what we need to do. And we have a couple of other subdivisions that we need to do total reconstruction. Some of them we need, need it because the drainage is shot too. The drainage here is good, but a lot of places, they use translight pipe and clay tile pipe and those are just shot. So we've got huge subdivisions that need total reconstruction and that's in the next bond.
What's the timing, the necessary timing of making this decision? Because I'm not ready to make a decision tonight, you know, as far as I feel.
Well, I have instructed my crew to get us online for the pavement restoration of the gas patch because no matter what, we have to do that.
Right. But you said that you might possibly tie it in with the other crack sealing, you know, so I just want to know the timing of making a decision.
We're, we're looking at the end of August. I don't have a firm, I have one, one project was, one project was kicked back a week because of the rain, but that was the train approach. And a train approach would not be good for this one, because you can't have a lot of structures. Catch basins are troublesome, they chew the teeth right off the miller. And I'm not so sure I really want to mill or do a total reconstruction of the gas line under it. Although it did down Louis Hill, so it should be okay. It's deep though.
Could we request Mark to come and talk to us? I'd like to, you know, just have the road person come in and give us a definitive answer, you know, a little bit. I'm not saying that you didn't do a good job, John, thank you.
Okay, general question.
Yes.
So there was a comment made that we're behind in maintaining roads and that they're in disrepair. Was that, is that a fair assessment of, are we behind? Are there lots that need to be done?
I would say.
There's always more that can be done.
For years, I've said that we should be putting a million dollars a year in for roads. Capital budget, including roads. So alternative to that, we have been bonding, which has been every three years or so, three, four years. And it allows us to do more than we could ever do at once and a big, again, a neighborhood project. And I think those are kind of, sometimes that is the appropriate way to do the big projects. You know, Northfields was done, constructed in the sixties, so. And I think that was an oil and sand road, so it had no structural strength. It was one of the first paved subdivisions. People forget how pavement's a fairly new thing to this town in a lot of ways. We, we still have a lot of dirt roads, but we've, you know, done a lot of work on some of those, the technique that you talked about, which is the holy place recycling, where we use the millings and mix it up ourselves or plug mill mix. So to answer that question better, Matt, it would be, in my project memo, I had mentioned that we're bringing in a firm to do a full pavement assessment of all the roads in town to check. This had been done like twenty-five years ago and we've been working off kind of that list, but we've got a lot of new roads and a lot of roads that we've done treatment for, so it's an outside evaluation, but I can tell you Gardner Tavern is no, it's, there's no question that would be on whatever list we had because they need for the patching in it. There's also something that I call shoving going on there, where frankly, there are these let-off cracks right across the road and frankly, it looks like the pavement is shoving down and does a stress crack right across the road. And that's a steep hill and it could be big chunks of it are just like moving.
There's not drainage under the road or something like that?
No, again, it has, that has drainage there. I, I think it has to do with just the pavement is getting old, it needs oil, it needs, it dry, asphalt dries out and that's more of the advantages of a chip seal, a liquid, liquid based thing is it kind of seeps in a little bit better. And chip seal is very viable in terms of, you know, doing, doing that, but it's, again, extends the life, it doesn't replace the road.
Lisa Thomas? Go ahead.
So Case Road or Brights Mill, when I moved down, and Case Road we chip sealed at some point.
Yeah.
And it's been done, I think a couple of times. And I drive down that road often. So it's something that we do a lot.
Chip seal's our primary road maintenance program. We try to do a couple, again, larger, if we have bonding, then we'll try to look at the larger projects. And we've tried to do a mix where we try to pick a specific treatment for each road. Louis Hill, again, the shape of the road was just all wrong and had to be totally reconstructed and that's why that was done. And the train was a process that a lot of towns don't use. We had to bring, you know, that, the equipment that was, was there, that was a million and a half worth of equipment and they got to schedule if it comes in from Upper State of New York. So, so we're scheduled, and you know, typically train a new road, a road that was built right and with modern road standards. So Louis Hill wasn't. We did Eastview because it was so bad and the intersection was bad, so it had to be total reconstruction. Kind of just the way the Eastview and Louis Hill went together was just poor. The geometry was poor. And I think people forget that Eastview was a cul-de-sac. And so we did, did that section, because that was, again, the section that was done poorly. Thank you.
Thanks. I think it was when Mark Kiefer first came on board, but it could have been a different person because it's been a lot of years, but I remember we had a presentation. I think it was Mark, didn't he go out and do tons and tons of sampling to try to start determining the conditions of our roads? Because we know, we, that's why we started bonding. I mean, we bonded three million dollars over time, several times now, because, and I just couldn't believe in, when he went over all the roads and what it takes to truly fix a road. What it costs, like just to do a mile of road. And I think when folks hear, oh, we've got a three million dollar bond, it's like, we're going to do all this work and it's like half a road. So I think that's something we need to think about too. You know, we're not a town that has access to a lot of funds to do these things.
Which is also why we've been going after those lots of grants.
Right.
So I have like fifteen million dollars for the lots of grants to fix roads. And in some cases, I had to get classifications of roads changed so that it would qualify. So I, if the rules don't apply, change the rules. So we're the first in the state that got daily road reclassified and we're going in this fall for an application for three million dollars for daily road. So.
And our, our road has been chip sealed at least twice, including when my kids were little. And it certainly isn't, you know, the best of times for a few days. And the greatest complaint that I really, that my neighbors would knock on my door about was the, the stone collecting on the edges of their yards and killing the grass, which, which again, can, can be remedied. But it truly, there's, there's truly a money issue for us too. We're not a community that has a lot of money to fall back on. We really rely on, on these grants and things. And it, you know, and I heard everything everybody said tonight. I think it really, we're really, it's, it's difficult for us and we have to consider the entire community and treat everybody fairly. Our neighborhood is full of kids, or it used to be, well, now it's full of kids.
So up on Heather and Sotary, I was up there and there were.
That's not mine.
No, no, I don't. But when I was up there and I took pictures of it, there were families walking with strollers and babies and everything else. So again, the smaller stone that we changed it, a quarter inch stone, is, makes a difference. It's not, it's, it's not this sharp, you know, intrusive stuff. And, and the true reason that we stopped using the larger stone was noise. And nobody's raised noise, nobody raised dust. So, so those are the two issues that we've resolved by going to the smaller stone. The smaller stone, not quite as structurally strong, I mean, because it doesn't bridge a gap as well, but the neighbors find it much less cumbersome. Again, after, after a little bit, it's really hard to tell the difference between chip seals road and a, and a cycle.
John, did you use the chip seal around High Street?
Yes.
Okay, but smaller stone?
The smaller. We've been using quarter, quarter inch for about four years now.
Okay. Because it didn't match the rest of the older chip seal.
That's, that's the color of, depends where you get it. So that's the sand, actually, that's mixed in with the product. Don't like the brown stuff as much, but where in Avon, where I used to work, they would chip seal and they, they would import red stone around Avon Old Farms, because that's would match the buildings better. But they would have to bring that in for Upper State of New York, so Avon uses chip seal.
We can't really, we don't tend to do that. We need to stick. Yep. Yes. All right, back to.
Same as every other.
Our agenda number four, acceptance of minutes from June twenty-first, two thousand twenty-one. Move to accept the minutes of. June twenty-one.
June twenty-first, two thousand twenty.
Thank you. Any changes, corrections, additions to these minutes? Lisa Thomas?
That's a couple. On the bottom, on page six at the bottom, there is a sentence that says, hand said, and it should say, hand said, his reading of the Board of Ed, et cetera, et cetera. On page twelve, the second full paragraph, this is a sentence that starts with Penny said, and then it's that council in a few days.
Page twelve.
Second, second line, up in the thing, second line.
Okay. I thought she said second paragraph and second line.
Sorry, I did, my fault. I hope, this is that one here, eleven and twelve.
Twelve.
Page twelve.
Second sentence.
Oh, second sentence, okay. And what is it again? The question?
The sentence starts with Penny said, and then it should say council in a few days. Penny said on.
That's not the same right sentence, though.
Yeah, it's the second full paragraph here. Sorry, I don't have both open. Are you on page twelve?
This is the top of page twelve.
Second full paragraph.
Second line.
Oh, second line, that's a better way to say it.
But it's not the line she's reading.
The second paragraph. Oh my gosh. I have to open that.
Sorry.
Now I know my math since I've been out.
Oh, page eleven.
Oh, is it still on page eleven? All right, I'm sorry.
Penny said.
Penny said, page eleven.
Last paragraph.
Last paragraph.
Penny said a lot in all these.
Penny did say a lot. Penny, for your thoughts, said the game field is where the other day.
Let's skip that one for now. Can I just ask on page twelve, that's page eleven.
Well, top of page eleven, Penny said it's a large wetlands complex. What's the next part that you're talking about?
Can we just also look again, but on page twelve, where the recess is called? And then we resume?
Yeah, who's speaking?
Who's speaking at that point? That's more important. I, I, who was, who was speaking there about the softball committee made informed thoughtful decisions?
That's the narrator.
I went here as a student.
Bird dives?
Bird, bird dives.
I honestly, I don't know if it was John speaking, John Elsasser at that point?
No, there wasn't John.
Was it, was it Matt Senior speaking at that point or was it Bonnie?
I think it was somebody from the committee, maybe?
It could be, maybe that's somebody.
Maybe it was Bonnie.
I'm reading it, I don't know if it was Bonnie.
But that would need to be, I think.
Identify, yeah, clarify. Matt, I'm sorry, no, on the same page before you guys go away. The top paragraph, the, it's not a full paragraph there, but the one that we were working from before. Go down to line one, two, three, four, five. Fifth line, it says, Elsasser said there's not a lot of room for multi-sport concept. First, I'm not sure John said that. Then it says, his opinion is that the two cannot exist. I know he didn't say that. So I'd like to identify who actually said, say coexist, cannot coexist. Todd, I believe, gave his opinion. He said, you want my opinion? The two can't coexist and I remember him saying that.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But I didn't.
So that should be a Penny said?
Yeah.
Yes, it'd be another Penny said.
But John, did you?
I found what I looked for.
I didn't say that.
No, you didn't say the first one part either. Elsasser, there's not a lot of room for, I think Todd said all of that.
It is on page twelve, so it's the second full paragraph. It starts with Williams asked if, with the very last sentence, Penny said. It starts with Williams asked if, with the very last sentence, Penny said, he could get that information to the council in.
Oh, change is to end.
A few days.
There you go.
Very good.
We'll have one right at the top of that paragraph then.
Go ahead, John.
The first sentence at the top of that same paragraph starts, Williams asked if Pop Warner is pay for play or AAU. AAU should be capitalized, all of them.
All three of them. Okay. Anybody else have anything in these minutes? Lisa Thomas?
I just had a question. At the top of page 13.
I just can't have.
John mentioned that he's gonna get a PowerPoint to us that Rick Roberts put together about the new zoning legislation. I just want to remind you of these.
I sent you an article on it.
Okay.
It said it was already resolved.
All right. I can look for the PowerPoint.
Okay. I actually had one regarding that sentence. Just, Rick Roberts, you know, about town authorities did a presentation on zoning and we will be getting the PowerPoint. Just a little restructure of that sentence?
Take out that.
Take out that and just end with PowerPoint.
Okay.
Zoning and, just change T H A T to A N D. Does that work?
Yes. And then, and then delete the word on at the end of it. And then I thought we had a little discussion about the difference between a home rule state and, so you'll call John doing a clarification for me. I don't know if it matters, but.
You wanted to give it to John? You mean attribute it to John? Is that what you're saying?
No, it's missing.
It's missing his discussion of clarifying if this is a home rule state and.
Elsesser said, home rule.
Only it titles a town to do what the state authorized.
So that Elsesser said.
There you go.
Not Todd.
No Todd, no Penny.
No Penny.
Okay. Matt Senior?
Couple of quick ones. Page 11, the first line in the full, first full paragraph, custom estimates from February 2021. Just changed W H E R E to W E R E were shown to compare. And then I did have one addition or change on page four. Under 6B, council members, 1, 2, 3, 4, the fourth line, it says, Tim Ackert spoke with the dedication of the lighting. I think it should be about the dedication, first of all. I didn't even notice that before. The lighting for his wife. And it says, and the dedication of the bench and the placard to Tom Pope. So that's not correct. So you should put a period after Tim's lighting for his wife. And Matthew O'Brien Jr., as chairman of the Coventry RTC, spoke about the dedication of the bench and the placard to Tom Pope, if that's okay. Because it was Matthew Jr. that spoke about, you know, the dedication of the bench.
Okay.
I'm just seeing if there's anything else. I don't think there is, but.
All right. All those in favor of approving the minutes, this said changes, please say aye.
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 Matt, say aye.
Aye.
There you go.
Unanimous. Next item on our agenda is our consent agenda. Can I have a motion to approve our consent agenda?
Smoke to approve the consent agenda?
Thank you. And that was Lisa Cohen. That seconded, I guess. Is there anything anybody wants to remove from our consent agenda this evening? Lisa Thomas? Just the stop meeting minutes, please.
Six F, eight.
Thank you. Is there anything else anybody wants to remove? All those in favor of approving our consent agenda, removing item 6F, 8, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Reports, I can forego a report this evening. Any council members want to report?
I want to say thank you. Go ahead, please.
I was gonna bring up about Barbara Hall retiring from the library after 30 years. I wonder if there's some sort of recognition we as a council can do for her service in that role. That's a long time to be serving the community. The entire, you know, the entire community stretches from birth to, to that. We can take advantage of that resource.
Yep. Good to know about that.
And then the only other thing I wanted to mention was when I was watching the news reporting on the water rescue that we recognized our officers for. And there was reporting on the couple who came with their Humvee. You know what I thought of immediately, right? Is the Humvee that we have sitting at our police station that people have asked us about so many times? Why do you have that there? Isn't that a military vehicle? Well, that's why we, that's why we have that there. That's why we approved that to begin with. And I remember John talking about how we have roads in Coventry that we really didn't have vehicles that in a storm, like a deep snowstorm or storms where there was a lot of debris, we couldn't necessarily get to people. So it was just really interesting. It wasn't our Humvee that was on the scene, but that's the vehicle that allowed the state troopers to get there and to help out. So I just, I just wanted to mention that because I know several of us have been questioned about it. This is a good example.
It does come up.
It does. It does. And it's a reasonable question for people to ask, but this is a good, a good example.
We took the gun through it off.
Could you not make these calls? You're not helping.
All right.
You set the paint flowers on it.
Any other council members want to report on anything? Next on our agenda is 6C Steering Committee, Matt O'Brien Jr.
Yep. Thankfully, we moved several items through steering at the last meeting. Steering discussed a proposal to break the Avery Shores road turnover strategy into a temporary stage and a final stage to phase in some of the improvements. To briefly explain the concept, the association would need to grant the town a temporary construction easement so that we could proceed. The town would first repair catch basins and remove several trees that threaten traffic and power lines. Matching funds would have to cease if we went forward with that. Second would be a road reconstruction packaged together with other lake roads and the installation of a sewer system. For this stage to proceed, the town would need permanent rights from the association. Steering then referred the topic to finance to explore costs and benefits.
Well, you just threw in installing a sewer system.
Now, the sewers have already.
In the area that were, sewers were installed.
Oh, excuse me.
Yep.
I was gonna say, that was a financial decision.
John hand moved to recommend to the council that it sign on to Senate Bill 1, which was the recent legislation passed by the state legislature that makes the declaration that racism constitutes a health crisis in Connecticut and launches a number of exploratory subcommittees that will be tasked with gathering evidence and making recommendations over many years. This item is on our agenda tonight for discussion. The statement that I introduced a few weeks ago that condemns antisemitism was considered and there was consensus that we should recommend that the full council sign on in a show of support as a full council.
All right, thank you. Now, 6D Finance Committee, Matt O'Brien Senior.
Yes. So I don't have a sort of, I'm jealous. I don't have a sort of report. We held the Finance Committee meeting on July 12. Our Finance Director, Amanda Backhouse, reported that as of June 20th, excuse me, June 30, 2021, the town of Coventry has collected $31,397,143 or 100.5, 50%, 0.5% of the $31,240,145 anticipated property tax revenue. This compares to the same period last year when we collected 99.45% of anticipated revenue. So we actually had a very good year. Our general fund revenue collections are $41,969,749 or 100.68% of $41,688,125 adjusted budget revenue. This compared the same period last year, we collected total general fund revenues of 99.11% of anticipated revenue. As of June 30th, general, so all these are good numbers. I just want everybody to be paying attention. As of June 30, general fund, general, general fund, general government expenditures totaled $9,841,825. An outstanding accommodations totaled $248,739 for a total of 98.089% of our adjusted budget. That's $10,090,564 of the budgeted appropriation of $10,288,509. Also good news. Amanda reported that as of June 30th, 2021, the Board of Education has spent $27,293,458 or 97.94% of their approved budget of $27,866,548. Same period last year saw total expenditures of 98.75% of the fiscal year 1920 budget of $27,282,347. This leaves $573,090 of the board's 2021 budget unspent as of June 30th, 2021. We do not have information about the outstanding accommodations that the board has. Amanda reported that COVER has collected 101% of anticipated revenue and interest. Same period last year saw COVER collections of 98.03% of anticipated revenue. COVER Fund will end the year with a $173,673 balance. The Sewer Use Fund is in good shape and the Recreation Fund is projected to end the year with a negative $45,315. That was actually also good news because you might remember the month before we were projecting $100,000 loss. Amanda reported that the EMS Fund will end the year with a negative $187,863 balance. We're gonna be watching that. The committee discussed the monthly financial reports as of June 30. Our CNREF ended the fiscal year with a balance of three, I'm gonna make a correction at the bottom of this paragraph for everyone, so please pay attention. Our CNREF ended the fiscal year with a balance of $355,365. As of July 1, the balance is $282,763 due to our already approved expenditures. Amanda discussed that we are anticipating about $95,000 in additional funds to flow into CNREF from the Folly Lane Bridge Project Settlement. So instead of FEMA, it should read from the Folly Lane Bridge Project Settlement, please. The committee discussed the Board of Education's Management Report as of May 30, 2021. Chair called attention to the third page of this, of this report. He noted that this was a new page that first appeared with the April 30 Management Report and said it has additional information in it. This report indicated that the board had general fund COVID-related savings of $167,081.74 as of May 30 and the projected general fund COVID-19 related expenditures of $444,482 for a net total of COVID-related expenses that would be paid for out of the board's operating budget of $277,400.62. The chair stated, again, that it would have been more appropriate, more transparent and more informative if the board had reported net figures all year rather than just highlighting the COVID expenses. The committee discussed requests for ARP funds appropriations from Cultural Arts and Eastern Highlands Health District. We discussed that funding for Cultural Arts has been included in our list under consideration for use of ARP funds. John reported that the Eastern Highland Health District has already spent the funds, should say spent, not spend, spent the funds that are requested, that they are requesting. The committee recommends that the town council appropriate $4,634 of ARP funds to Eastern Highland Health District. John Elsesser provided information about the report that Attorney Roberts had given to the steering committee that Matt just talked about on June 28 about a possible path the council could follow that would eventually result in the town taking over Avery Shore Beach Association roads. It would be a two-step plan that as part of step one would have the town accept responsibility for several catch basin repairs to ensure proper filtering prior to discharge into the lake and removal of several trees to assure the road remains open to the public and avoid tree cost outages. Under this concept, the town association would grant the town a temporary construction easement over.
I think you meant over the area.
Over the area, they hold legal rights too. Yes, thank you, John. Step two would tie into a road construction project along with the other lake roads with sewer lines that is envisioned in a few years that is planned by the town. There were other issues discussed that would also need to be resolved in order to make this plan work. John?
I just want to jump in.
Yeah, you could fix that grammar. You could fix that grammar.
Lake roads instead of like toads.
Where's, oh, no. You sure it's not like toads? Where do you see that?
I mean, there are some.
Oh, yeah, there is.
There's frogs, there's toads, there's.
We'll fix that too.
A whole complement.
So the last line in that paragraph should say other, other lake roads with sewer lines. John asked if we would recommend that we begin a discussion with the association and see if we can use this plan as a basis for moving forward. The committee recommends that the council direct John to begin those discussions with the association. Next, the committee discussed the school roof project and the HVAC project at the high school, middle school. We discussed that the pricing for both projects has jumped dramatically for a number of reasons and that there are a number of issues outstanding that need to be resolved. The HVAC project may impact the school roof projects if the HVAC equipment, for example, would require structural changes to the roof to support and accommodate it. The town will be investigating whether the HVAC project will or can be reimbursable by the state and if so, at what percent of cost. We will also explore whether adding air conditioning will affect our ability to get reimbursement. This issue has a number of parts that are still in motion and it has become quite, has become complicated. The committee and our staff are working hard on this issue and will get back to us with more information as it becomes available. The committee discussed the girls' softball field project and the chair explained how this new possibility came to be considered. Most recent changes are based on a concept plan that was developed for baseball several years ago. It involves relocating and improving the transfer station to allow us to build one field on that site. The second field would be located in the lanyard, excuse me. So I thought I took this out. Take out gravel pit, just say the, it's called, what is it called, John?
Lay down.
The lay down yard. So I corrected it on my, but I didn't correct it on this one. Is it corrected on yours?
It's corrected on the one that we have.
Okay, so I'm reading. I printed mine early on. So lay down yard site on South Street Extension. The chair said he had, he had raised this possibility on Tuesday after the June 21st town council meeting because of concerns of the issues slash problems that still exist with the plan to use the lay down yard site for both fields. At that point, this would have meant considering adding, moving the transfer station to a referendum in order to complete the project. Chairman said he was willing to look into that further. The following day, June 23, Amanda Backhouse, John Elsesser and I received updated guidance from the U.S. Treasury about the acceptable use, uses of ARP funds. And Amanda found, I think it was on Thursday, that it would be possible to relocate and upgrade the transfer station using ARP funds if the council approved. John said that he spoke with Todd Penny about the new option and said that Todd thought it would be of similar or competitive pricing compared to the other projects. John asked if he should try and get cost estimates for the new plan so he could bring it to the council for their consideration. After consulting with Julie Blanchard, the town council chairwoman, I asked John to proceed. The chairman expressed his excitement about this new plan, stating that in his opinion, it would solve all the problems and issues that he felt exist with the other plans. It would eliminate issues related to parking, traffic, pedestrian safety and availability of room for other activities beyond just the fields themselves. He said it would offer more visibility for the softball field, provide a more centralized environment, connect directly with the football field and offer opportunities for centralized services such as snack shack, bathrooms, et cetera. It would also, also offer other future possibilities. We're waiting for cost estimates from anchor engineering and Todd Penny for the council to consider. The committee then discussed the latest answers from the Board of Education to our questions about COVID and other budget related issues. The chairman expressed dismay that the board either did not respond to some of the questions, take out the, to some of the questions that were asked and provided unrelated information. One question that was asked was about the large amount of money unspent as of May 30 in their operating budget. The chairman had prepared an email to the committee members before their meeting, a worksheet that demonstrated that the Board of Education had over $630,000, more on hand as of May 30 this year compared to May 2020. He pointed out that the board reported that they actually spent $46,571 more as of May 2020 than they did as of May 2021. He pointed out that the board spent less money this year, even though their budget was almost $600,000 larger this year than last year. And they reported that they had paid for $277,400 of unbudgeted COVID expenses from their operating budget this year and that they had spent $90,955 for the endpoint security platform upgrade that was also not included in their approved budget this year. Chairman also pointed out that the Coventry schools had closed last year in March 2020 and remained closed for the rest of the school year, but the, but the board still spent more last year as of May 2020 than they did had as of May 2021. He said this raises questions and the committee members agreed. Amanda Backhouse confirmed that she had reviewed the worksheet and said it was accurate and not misleading in any way. And I've attached that worksheet to this report. In response to another question about why the board had reported only COVID expenditures each month on their management report and did not show COVID expenditures or net total expenditures, instead, the board said that this is in line, quote, "This is in line with our past practice as it was provided in quarter four of 2020." It should be close quote there, I apologize. It was noted that COVID impacted our schools in 2020, beginning in March, and that they didn't realize any COVID savings until the fourth quarter. Saying that this set a precedent for this school year makes no sense. Saying that this set a precedent for this school year makes no sense. Obviously, the Board could and should have identified COVID savings every month when they were occurring. The chairman said that by only identifying COVID expenses each month, the Board was exaggerating the impact that COVID was having on their budget throughout the year. Lisa Thomas suggested that the chairman request a meeting with representatives of the Board and their staff who can answer questions about these issues so we can eliminate the back-and-forth nature of our discussion. Chairman said he will reach out to the Board to arrange such a meeting. I recommend they review the attachments included on the Finance Committee agenda to get more information. And then I did include the attachment that I mentioned.
Lisa Thomas?
I have a couple of comments. First off, I think since the chair just read a lengthy summary of the meeting, and that that will be attached to this agenda, and since we don't have finance meeting minutes yet, I think also attached to the agenda should be the Board of Ed responses that we received.
Attached to which agenda?
I mean, not the agenda, to these minutes. I know they're attached to the last finance agenda, but I think there should be a whole package attached to this agenda, because it's already got the report that the chairman just read, the chairman's own analysis of the numbers, so I think it should also have for full reference the --
Answers to the questions.
-- Board of Ed's responses to the questions.
Okay, great.
Also, this came up before, but in the chair's report that he just read, the chair commented about the Board spent more last year as of May twenty-twenty than they had as of May twenty-twenty-one. He said this raises questions, and the committee members agree. I did not agree. My comment was that I care -- you asked me, didn't I care? I said I do care, but I'm hearing two very different sets of comments. I'm hearing an analysis by the Finance Committee Chair, and I'm hearing an analysis by the Board of Ed, and the two don't jive. So to me, I don't -- I don't -- it doesn't reflect me to say that it raises questions and the committee members agree. I think there's a disconnect, and again, I think there needs to be a better -- a deeper conversation. Another thing that I brought up during the meeting that hopefully will be reflected in the finance minutes but aren't reflected in the report that was just read, is I asked about the check registers that our town finance director has access to, which shows every single check that has been written to pay for Board of Ed expenditures. And I understand that that needs to be cross-referenced with another document that I honestly can't remember the name of, because I know that the check register doesn't say exactly what was purchased, but there is a way to match those checks to what was purchased. I think if there's a -- there are questions about how money was spent, that's a great way to figure it out. I mean, it is time-consuming, and will take up a lot of our finance director's time and use up a lot of dollars, but I think we've spent two years, and actually, there's been more years of these exact kinds of questions over and over and over again, and so at some point, there needs to be a way to resolve it, and that, you know, I hope to see that reflected in the finance meeting minutes. It wasn't reflected in this report.
My report's not intended to be minutes, you understand.
I understand that, but I just want to make it, you know, so your report doesn't really reflect my role in the meeting completely.
The minutes are though. This is my report.
And I'm hoping the minutes -- well, I understand it's your report, but you're reading it out loud. You're reading it -- you're reading it out loud. Nobody has a chance to see it other than us. We got it this afternoon, and I understand that you say you'd like to wait for minutes before you write this report to send to us. I don't know where those minutes are or how you have access to them to write this report, because none of us have seen the minutes, so -- and so you're reporting, but I think you could send us these reports sooner than a couple of hours before the meeting, so that we can have an opportunity to look at them. But anyway, I had an opportunity to look. This is my response to your report. I'm part of the Finance Committee, and so I would like my role in the committee to be accurately reflected. Thank you.
Mattsey.
So you accurately reflected part of our conversation, and then I asked Amanda if she had a chance to look at my worksheet and asked if it was accurate and if it was misleading in any way, and she said that it was not, that it was accurate, that it was accurately reflecting the facts. And then I said to you, doesn't that raise questions? And I believe you did say, yes, it does, but you can go back and look at that if you'd like to, but there's two different parts of the conversation. Your part was correct, but there was another part to it. But again, this -- my report is not meant to be a reflection of everything that happened in the meeting other than what I consider to be the important aspects that we want to report to the council. That's my job as the director, chairman.
So I'm also a member of the Finance Committee and have a role in that committee and entitled to speak during the finance reports at the town council, so that is what I wanted to say.
Nobody stopped you.
I understand, but --
The other thing was that --
You do hear what you're saying to me right now, right? In trying to push down, put down, discredit what I'm saying? So I have a role in that Finance Committee. Those are the comments I made, and I want to make sure that my role --
So I had the floor, and I'm not sure why you keep doing that.
Because I was called on. I was recognized by the chair.
You just called on her while I was talking?
No, you started talking while I was talking, so I was recognized by the chair, but thank you. I'm done.
Mattsey.
So the idea that we were going to go and look at the check registers, Amanda said that that wouldn't be a good way to do any of the work that you're suggesting. She said that it wasn't be able to identify what was budgeted and what was not budgeted, what was spent, you know, exactly, and what was not, so I don't think that suggesting that is going to be helpful going forward, and I'm not going to recommend that the Finance Director spend her time doing that. I think the Board should be able to answer questions about their budget and how they spend their money. These are very straightforward questions. Their answers come back as if they don't understand questions, which I've been very careful to fashion, and I actually ask Amanda for her advice as to how they should be worded sometimes to make certain that I'm going to be able to solicit the kind of information that would be helpful, but I am happy to have you make comments, Lisa, but I don't think that you should expect my report to reflect everything that is occurring every minute of the meeting that we're having, so.
Lisa Coan?
Thank you, Julie. I have some questions for Matt. This is coming based on your report tonight and my observations from the meeting, and I'm just trying to clarify things because I've seen the same or similar questions come up year after year, and I just want to understand a little bit more about why everything seems to arise year after year. Now, I do have to say I was bothered because during last Monday's Finance Committee meeting, you had said that the Board is not providing information regarding its expenditure reporting of approximately six hundred thousand. Is that incorrect?
I never said that, but go ahead.
I think it was around E-thirty, and then around maybe nine minutes later, you had said that the Board -- and you said this several times, that they were being deliberately misleading regarding their COVID savings and expenditures, and that you didn't like how they were being reported. Now, to me, that's a serious accusation, and I just would like to know if you could provide us with some evidence of that, if they're deliberately misleading us and by extension of taxpayers and Coventry, and then there's -- and by implication, if they're failing to conform to good accounting practices or withholding funds or overinflating their budgets. That's one of my questions. I do have more. I'd like to know if you have an articulable concern about if there's some sort of malfeasance going on, and if it's about specific pots of money, like the COVID relief funding, and if you think the Board is hiding something.
Yes, Mattsey.
No, and I never said any of those things. The fact of -- I'm going to speak now. May I speak? So the --
Can I still have the floor?
I never said anything about they were hiding how they were spending the six hundred and thirty-two thousand dollars. I said that it was remaining as of May thirtieth.
I didn't say you did. I asked you.
You just did. I'm sorry, you just did.
No, 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 excuse me. I asked you if you think they are hiding something. I didn't say you said.
No, you said I did at E-thirty. You said I said this.
I said at E-thirty-seven PM. You said several times the Board is being deliberately misleading.
Okay, so you're talking about not reflecting any COVID savings for the eleven months or, excuse me, nine months up until April of this year, and only showing on their management report the COVID expenditures that they were realizing as part of their operating budget. So at the bottom of every management report, they gave a big, bold number that said our COVID expenditures today were, and they gave the number. They didn't offset that at all in any of those months with any of the COVID savings that they were realizing. They didn't show a net number anywhere until April of this year, and yes, I do think that that's misleading, and I do think that that gives a different impression to people as far as how the COVID expenditures are impacting their budget, including perhaps the town council. So yes, I do stand by all those statements that you just said.
Is there a particular reason why they're doing that?
How would I know that? I just know that they are doing it. I just know that they are doing it, have been doing it.
Another question. I'm just -- I was also curious why you said the schools were closed last spring, because they weren't closed.
Schools closed in March of twenty-twenty.
They weren't closed. They were -- the physical buildings were closed.
So the schools, the schools weren't closed. That's right.
Teachers are still teaching.
I don't know why we're doing a back-and-forth at all. I don't understand this.
So it's my luck to you. We are all equal members of this town council, and Lisa is speaking, and you --
And one of us has the floor at a time.
She has the floor, and you keep interrupting her.
Okay.
Don't respond while I'm speaking.
Maybe the chair would facilitate that.
Go ahead, Lisa.
Well, I just, I mean, the students were not on campus and the buses weren't running, but they were still -- the instruction was still going on. Necessary educational services are still going on on a regular basis, so I just want to make that clear, that the schools were not closed. I also saw around -- during that meeting, you were questioning what the Board spent as of May of last year, and I know you know that both the town and the Board of Ed have received cool audit statements for last year and also for the past several years. We have a great team. Are you asking about last -- the expenditures as of May from last year because you believe that our audit firm, Lou Shapiro, is consistently missing material deviations?
Am I supposed to respond, or does she have the floor?
I can read all my questions and, you know, I can respond one by one, or I can continue. If you believe that they are consistently missing these material deviations, then why are we continuing to hire them?
Do you want to let him respond? Do you want to respond to that?
And no, as I've said many times at our meetings, and Lisa would account for this, or let you know that I said that there is no discrepancy, that audit doesn't show the usage of the budgeted money, just that all the money is being spent appropriately. So no, I've never made any such accusation, claim, or any comments.
Have you asked the auditors what sampling has been?
Excuse me?
Mm-hmm.
I didn't hear what you --
Have we asked the auditors what sampling has been done? Yes, they do explain that to us.
I guess, and here's another question in line with my other questions, Matt. If the Board's budget is inappropriately bloated, or if they're not spending money as they should, or if their accounting practices being used, just the implication is, why haven't the four members of your own Republican caucus on the Board of Ed raised any red flags? And why were the votes approving the Board's budgets last year and this year all unanimous?
All unanimous?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep.
What was the first part of the question? I got it.
If, as you would --
Oh, if I think their budgets are bloated or something?
Yes.
So I've never made any such comment. What I've done is only look at the actual facts of what's been spent and what's been reported, and raise those issues so that we can get better clarification as to what is happening with the Board of Education's budget. Never made any such claims, never made any such comments.
Okay, well, I seem to remember in twenty-nineteen, there were signs up all over town saying that Democrats on the Board of Education were misspending five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. And where was that money? I don't know how you can say you've never made those kinds of comments.
So you think I write all those signs on town? Is that what you're saying? By the way, the sign didn't say that at all. What it did say was, how did they spend the surpluses that were being generated? That's all it asked. Didn't say anything about --
Well, if there's a surplus --
It didn't say anything about money being misspent or misappropriated.
Matt, in public budget, if there's a surplus, that implies that the budget is bloated.
No, it just implies that there was money left over after the operating budget paid for everything that was included in it.
Okay.
There's a lot of reasons why those happen. There's no other commentary with that statement other than the question was, how was that? Anyway, it has nothing to do with my report or anything to do with what we're discussing. There you're done?
It does have everything to do with your report, because you're reporting it when it happened at the Finance Committee meeting.
I didn't talk about any signs in two thousand and nineteen at my Finance Committee meeting.
I'm giving you an answer, Matt, to your question back to me. Did you want to answer about your own Republican caucus on the Board of Ed seems to be fine with these numbers?
I don't even know what they talk about. I have never been to their meetings. Alls I know is that I've observed and reported what's actually been occurring, what's actually being reported, what's actually being spent, and what's remaining as of May thirtieth. That's all. If that raises questions, it doesn't raise any accusations, as you're suggesting.
Well, saying that they're being deliberately misleading is an accusation.
So saying they're being deliberately misleading about COVID savings is entirely different than talking about the budget remaining as of May thirtieth, which I never said anything about being misleading. So you're just using words --
Just going here, Matt.
You're just making things up and using words that you'd like to attribute.
No, 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 I can go back to --
Please do that, and then bring it back to us.
I certainly would love to.
Please do.
Do you have more questions, Lisa?
Yes, because I read through your questions, Matt, to the Board of Ed, and it appears that you're trying to ask them to prove a negative, which I'm sure you know is impossible. Again, this goes back, do you believe there's some sort of financial impropriety going on, on the part of the Board of Education? And if you do, can you please provide specific examples that you can share?
Can you share what question you're saying is the one that you're talking about? Because none of my questions do anything like what you just said.
Your questions are designed to prove a negative.
What negative is that? And what question are you talking about?
I'm not going to sit here and split here as you can now. I'm just asking these questions. Now, if you like, you can provide me with a written response.
I don't care to.
Because, you know, honestly, I see these questions year after year after year after year. It just seems like a hamster wheel, and I'm wondering if there's a lack of understanding on all parts, or if this is just something that's being done for political reasons.
Done?
That's it.
Okay. John, COVER.
We thought we were getting close on getting moving forward with the methane project with a two-to-three-week turnaround time. Later in the afternoon, we learned that all our state grants, we've got about six contracts out there, including the library grant, we learned through the library grant that Attorney General Tong is updating the standard contracts, so all the contracts have to be rewritten.
Oh, my goodness.
Which happened last year, too. I guess sometimes the state legislature passes new legislation that has to be incorporated into it. I would urge us to talk to our representatives and senators to talk about whether, when they do something, they could make it effective so that it doesn't delay these projects, because statewide, every steep grant, every housing grant, every road grant is not going to be delayed. So it's just very frustrating. I express my frustration to some representatives of OPM, and they said, yep. And they said, yep, we're doing the same thing. We have to rewrite all our grants that are going out. So it's just, I understand that there's goodwill and good reasons for these changes, and that things shouldn't be, you know, left to go stale. But I also think that at some point, when you've been waiting for something for ten months already, that something that's a work in progress should go forward. So I think they have to come up with some language. I'm just letting you know, I'm extraordinarily frustrated that, once again, everything is, everything's stopped on all products, including, we're about ready to go out the bid on Swamp Road, and I don't know, that's, that's a lot, so maybe it's a different contract, but I'm just afraid for everything. And in all these cases, we're going to lose this construction season.
I was going to say, that's the kicker, is the, the timing is going to push it back.
So, you know, just letting you know that the, Cobra, that's really the, the primary thing I was going to talk about was getting that methane going.
Project updates?
I'll keep it brief. On the school construction grant, Rusty Malika of Crimson Berry, the area of Malika, has set up a meeting of school business manager, myself, and Amanda, and itself, and school building, to talk about the ventilation, about options and, and school aid. So it's a complicated issue of whether it's called a priority or not priority project, whether it has to go through the legislature for the whole legislative session. Those are called priority projects, which would delay any construction, not even next summer, but the year after, because it has to go through the whole construction, the whole legislative session. So we're, we're looking at options there. Leslie, lunch hour, our new rec director started today, so it's great to have some staff back in the village. Road projects due to the water damage, Broadway culvert was repaired. It's quite, about half of the issue that Ashford had, only half of ours washed out, Ashford, was dramatically impacted. And we have some pavement, the water got, there's a pavement on Broadway and Carpenter, so both of those are on the list, but those are really pretty much the final things. Trow Bridge, we have this gravel division, we're going to go in and train that, so no, not a lot of point for us to put in, down material unless they get to chew up to put back down. But the train process for Carpenter, Trow Bridge, and South River has been delayed one week to the second week in August. Hydrella is, treatment is, is Friday. They're not even suggesting that we keep people out of water at all this time. So that's for their treatment, so.
Is it pretty limited treatment this year? It's a little bit more limited treatment this year?
No, they're doing, they're, they're still doing the whole lake. The initial grappling survey for Hydrella, they found very little. We know that there's still a healthy growth near the island, Crockett's Island on Hufflewoodland. And they're going to try a different treatment there of dousing it several times versus, because it just, there was so much water flowing there.
Right, right.
But their grappling survey, they didn't find a lot, and they're going to be back in over the next week or so, two weeks maybe, to scuba dive and start looking for it there, and start the tuber evaluation to see how the, whether they can find tubers in the soils where the beds were. So that's going. Wals, Wals project at the high school, they're actually doing mortar today, so it's moving along fast. And on softball, I have a Zoom call tomorrow with Anchor Engineering to go over the two plans and the prices with Todd, myself, and Kevin Grindel of Anchor. So we'll be getting some numbers fairly quickly on that. So, and, and the kind of tweaking, whatever designs that are kind of out there as discussion. So Todd was back last week, but we had him on road, road problems. So we still have one area on Monument Hill that we have to fix, but we have to have discussions with Hufflex on that, and we're coming up with who's responsible for what, because some of it's really on their property. But it was our water, so we're, we're going to, it's not a big thing, so we're going to work out how to get it remedied in the best way possible. It's just a little run edge, about six, eight inches of road kind of collapsed into their drainage thing, so. Anyways, we hope not to see this much water again. And Dr. Korbman has reminded us that the lake is also primary, one of the primary focuses is also water retention from flooding, because we had several buildings down in the village that received too much water that we have to be careful of. Primary purpose of the lake was hydropower and control and not just recreation, so the historical issues have changed. And town docks, we all have floating docks for this reason. You should be aware, planning and zoning hasn't really regulated docks, and at some point, maybe the solution is that we have to adopt late regulations for docks and replacement of docks, which other towns do. We've, we've tried to avoid that, but it's a wild west, and if they're going to install docks, they're unsafe. Maybe we have to start looking at safety purposes, health, safety, welfare. That's what zoning is about.
I have a question. On, on the docks in the lake, are most, most of them are stationary?
Anchor, anchor.
And not floating?
Right. People don't like floating docks, I guess. They're not as, they move a little bit more.
That's great.
That's, we buy them because they self-adjust, but they're a little bit more expensive.
It's easier to hire a boat.
I mean, over the years, again, where you put a dock impacts neighbors, and, and we haven't gone into, you know, there's no building permits and other things for docks, and maybe it's time we're going to have to start looking at that. Because if the, if the reports they're having is that docks are underwater, and they become obstruction and are not safe, are not safe for other people, and health, safety, welfare is what our regulations presumably are.
But how many times have you actually had that type of water level in your history?
This, this is probably the highest I've ever seen. We've been close to, close to this level at the dam, but, you know, people have installed lakes, docks, assuming with other assumptions over the years, so they're not looking at a thirty or forty year or a hundred year cycle. So, I mean, you can also set, the docks have to be at this elevation, even if you want fixed docks. But we've tried to avoid this, because once you get into dock regulations, you have a curved lake, how far the dock can go, and are you cutting across somebody else, which we try to encourage people never to cut in front of somebody else's drainage, but, you know, it's, it's a complicated issue. We've tried to avoid, and hopefully we can continue to avoid that. But when people's docks start floating away and so forth, it becomes an issue. So anyway, overall, I think we did a pretty good job in recovery, and we'll have to find some money. Broadway was twenty-three thousand dollars to fix. So we're out, we are officially, with the road work that we have, we may have to carve back some, some, some money this year.
Was there damage to Flanders?
Uh, no.
No?
It was flooded again last night. So, Bunker Hill Road is closed indefinitely in Handover. That road had already previously, it's in design and permitting to be replaced, but the water came up and pushed some of the pavement out, and so they're going to try to do a temporary fix because it won't be into construction till next spring, so they're going to try to do something to get it open sooner. They're not going to spend a lot of money on a temporary fix or something that they're going to repair. Unfortunately, we have a culvert on Bunker Hill that, that's also showing failure, and that was going to be our next bond. And ideally, it'd be, be wise for us to do that at the same time as the bridge is closed, because otherwise, our timing right now appears to be that we're going to be two years behind. They're going to just open this bridge, and then we're going to close it. So we're just, we weren't aware of their timing on this until, until this weekend, so. That's an issue for another day. We're waiting for the state to actually bond some local bridge money. This week, they have a lot of usable projects on the bond agenda. It was adopted by the state legislature to fund the, the local bridge program, but it's not on this week's agenda. Town aid for road and some other things are that we look forward to. So we had Jacobson prepare plans. We just got the draft plans last week, so we'd be ready for an application. Todd and I haven't had a chance to.
Don, hands.
Excuse me, thank you. On the, the Broadway repair that was done, there was new, there's a new culvert under the road, right? That's, that's the nature of the repair?
Half.
Half?
Half.
Halfway under the?
It's a half pipe.
Okay, so I, I just wanted to know about the, the permanence of that repair. Is this a temporary repair?
Yes, five to seven.
Five to seven years, advise us, okay.
Yeah, so the pipe that was put in, the pipe that was put in is a smaller sized pipe to match it in and tie it together.
Right.
So we've lost some hydraulic capacity, but the other half of the pipe that it tied into is also going. So, so we bought time, but we have to do a very complex drainage shed study. So, and that's going to require major FEMA. It's going to be a very expensive culvert replacement like Jones Crossing. It's going to probably be half a million bucks. So we, we.
It's a rather interesting water course there, you know?
And then add, add beavers to it to complicate life.
Beavers and turtles.
So it will move up the list on, on our next projects for major culverts. But again, should be, we have to do some measurements, because the state local bridge program has to be kind of like a ten foot wide, and right now it's a six foot pipe. So that drainage analysis has to prove that it's, needs to be, but alternatively, and this is getting way into too many weeds, but Jones Crossing, we had to do a double box culvert at two different heights, so the fish could have a free passage in another one without the deeper water so that they wouldn't bruise their bellies as they went through.
Absolutely.
And, and another one for all the flow. So if we have to do that, then probably we're going to be at the end.
How do they know before they start going up which one to use?
The faster flow is the deeper water. So anyways, we're going to, we're going to see whether that's something that we can get to qualifying, but.
Thank you.
My project, and just duty of permitting and timing, that's a two to three year permitting and design process.
So we can't really wait because of how long, the time we bought is only so long, and this process is going to take plenty of that, so.
I think it's going to be solid for a while, but we've got to get into our capital program. I like the two that we have in Bunker, Bunker Hill, and Parker Bridge, both.
COVID nineteen update?
Sent it in my background memo to you, the numbers of the state are, are jumping. We're heading the wrong way. So our health district, we had a few more cases. I sent those numbers out, but statewide it's more, more scary. One thing you should be aware of, the health district is actually having a dinner, kind of barbecue type of thing at Patriot Spark tomorrow to recognize the COVID volunteer workers, and so a lot of people have given out nurses for the nursing to give shots and other things, so.
Sure, how many is there?
Uh, five. Expecting a fairly large crowd, so they're asking people to card a little bit. We'll see. But it's, that's the health district's trying to recognize their medical response code.
Lisa Thomas?
I'm mentioning that to us because it is appropriate for us to be there, or should we stay away? Because they're expecting so many people.
I think it's for them, isn't it?
It's really for them. I was invited because I'm the vice chair of the health district, but I just wanted you to know that they're being recognized, so thank you for the application.
Micro grid update, unless you have more in your paper there?
No, micro grid update, they really want to get started on the sub meeting, meetings, but the board of ed has decided they, it's appropriate for them to also talk about and sign that agreement. So we modified that agreement to both include the line, which our attorney came up to make sure it's, and we're going to talk about this later, but they, they're going to try to get Tri-Tech to meet with two of the three groups to avoid losing another week. So that's really the micro grid update.
All right, six F five, the G F O A certificate of excellence in financial reporting for this year twenty twenty earned by our finance department?
Yeah, so congratulations to them. It's a team effort, and it's it's an outside review of their work and the auditor's findings, and it's a really good thing for us for bonding and borrowing purposes, and just kind of integrity of, outside integrity of our team, so.
Next item, six F eight, staff meeting units. Lisa Thomas, do you want to have this removed?
Yeah, just really quickly, in his accessory board, Mike mentions a solar farm and solar battery project. Can you just, just give us a little bit of information, where, what, when?
They come and they go, is the answer. We've had at least three different solar farms where people have bought options and then they've backed away from that.
Is that what this is looking to be?
Battery is a different thing. So battery actually, it's bound through a preliminary discussion with the planning and zoning commission for the substation that was almost underwater.
I was going to say, let's raise it on a platform, maybe in pairs.
Next to the substation on North River Road, company bounce office, looking at putting in basically a bunch of container boxes with batteries in that to, to put in batteries so that if the grid goes down, they can supply power. So for resiliency, it's a good thing. It's in the state plant. The planning zoning commission kind of has to look at their regulations a little bit more, but.
But how do they have a battery of questions?
I asked the question of, is there noise?
Oh, yeah.
And they said, there is not noise past a property line. So, you know, electricity has a very low hum. You put a whole bunch of batteries in a place, do you have a hum? And, and they said, no. No, if you're, most of the noise doesn't leave the container, but if, if nothing leaves a property line. So there's only a couple houses there, but, you know, that type of constant noise could get annoying.
I do remember you mentioning this frankly in a previous meeting.
So they took it the next step to, to talk to planning and zoning commission. We don't know if that's going to go for, but there's a couple people looking at solar farms in different areas. in different areas. A lot of them, I would be surprised because most of them are wooded areas and the cost of tree removal is just so huge that.
All right. Next item would be unfinished business. Seven A 20 slash 21 dash 79, consideration and possible action, participation in sign-on statement against antisemitism. This was something that we got from.
CCF.
CCF. Sorry, anyone that wants to speak about any of it? John Hand?
We looked at it in steering and it seems appropriate for us to sign on and, you know, agree with, I think it's pretty easy to agree with the stance that has been put forward here. Really do. I think it's sometimes signing on to some look back and say something to members of our community or prospective members of our.
Anybody else have anything to add about the mayor's against antisemitism?
I agree with John.
I almost wish that it said like, what it says is good. And I wish it included like anything, racism, antisemitism, bullying, like you could, the words that they've used. I know, but the words that they've used. It was well written, right now that we have it in our possession or have reviewed it.
All right, does somebody want to make a motion?
I'll move that we sign on to this.
Thank you, Lisa Conant. Any further discussion? All those in favor of participation in signing on to the statement against antisemitism, please say aye.
Aye.
unanimous, thank you. Next item of unfinished business, seven B 20 slash 21 dash 92, girl softball field project and discussion of next steps. Yes, Lisa Thomas?
You know, the thing's attached, so it didn't discuss. But I did just want to say something. Because it seems we've sort of come full circle. When Chairwoman Jo Lewis and the council majority, or the council last term established the softball field study committee, they certainly didn't anticipate that the committee would face the obstacles that have been thrown at it. And it appears that the current majority has co-opted the softball committee's role, not for the purpose of supporting their needs, but to continually redirect the committee away from what the committee feels is best for our softball players and push them toward taking over the football field that was built for football on top of the Catalanal site. Now, it seems the majority has been misrepresenting to the general republic, general public and to the softball committee, the fact that there is no longer Coventry Football Group intending to use the football field and are trying to back hill. I have a March 3rd email that Wendy Ruben sent to the recreation commission and the softball committee and on which both Matt O'Brien, senior and the town manager are copied, in which Wendy alerts the recreation commission to the fact that there is indeed a group working on rebuilding the Coventry Football Program and stating, quote, "I have to eat my hat regarding my comments at the Zoom meeting where my attempt to be a fortune teller regarding the future play of youth sports and football in particular is proving to be incorrect." Councilor O'Brien and Scawhus have known since at least early March about football's intent to re-group, yet did not reveal this in any finance committee meetings. Despite this knowledge, Councilor O'Brien has consistently presented side-by-side comparisons to the finance committee and to the town council that are slanted toward taking away the football fields and putting softball fields in their place. These actions knowingly pitted one group of our children against another, and that's just not right. Fortunately, the town manager pulled out the decade-old plans for redesigning the Miller Richardson Fields area and asked anchor engineering to tweak the plans for softball fields. Original plans actually had like four baseball fields. This new plan presents the best scenario for softball, baseball and football and for our community at large, since its scope is a safer, more unified plan. The revised 2010-2014 Miller Richardson plans that are going to be shared when completed seem to be exactly what the softball committee has said it's looking for. And I'm glad that John Elsesser pulled them out and sent them to anchor engineering for revision to accommodate softball. But this happened only after determining that we can use ARP money to move the transfer station. I also note that suddenly the leadership's concerns about mosquitoes in the lay-down yard have disappeared. As I recall, John Elsesser said at the last finance meeting and has said previously that softball didn't pursue the transfer station space because they didn't think they could take on the burden of rent fundraising for the cost of moving it, or they were also concerned that if the approximately $200,000 for moving the transfer station was part of the softball bond, it might not pass. But really, the town should have been the ones shouldering the responsibility for moving the transfer station all along. It's been a conversation in the past and I want to defer to John Hand, who I was asking questions of, about the previous council and conversations about the transfer station and the need to move it related to softball or not.
Yeah. So I recall meetings, I'll just jump in here for a quick second. I do recall meetings where the virtues, the benefits of moving the transfer station to a more central location, these virtues of doing that were extolled. It was talked about equipment savings, tires, how expensive the tires were on the equipment and how, you know, every time we move them on the roads, it really meant for off-road, move them on roads and choose up the tires. Tires are very expensive. Talking about staffing reliability, meaning you could have backup staff because you have to have the operator's license for the loader. And if it was co-located essentially with public works, then you have other people that can operate the equipment, more than one. If somebody's out sick, you can have another person could do it. So there are many benefits to it, not to mention just central, the benefit of it being central for everyone in the town, being relatively equidistant to go and use that transfer station where they need to. That's what I recall. I know John spoke to these things and it was very enlightening at the time and it stuck with me.
And yet that disappeared and put softball in this position where they've been punted and punted and punted. And now we're back, which is great. I'm glad we can be back to those plans from about a decade ago. They were great plans. We're all very excited about it, disappointed when we couldn't carry them through. And if we can, if softball can look at them, I assume they'll get first jobs at it and the ability, I mean, they really haven't even been looked very well into that, this conversation. But I really think this is something that they've been working on and there's a certain level of respect that they have not been recently afforded.
John, do you have anything to add at this time? We're waiting for more information.
Yeah. I can, after tomorrow's Zoom meeting, I can kind of email out at whatever timeframe we think is going to be coming forward. I don't think, I don't think that's going to be a long timeframe. I think there's some fine tuning about what should get be included, what should not be included, the initial, as a set of finance, you know, they had paved parking lots, which I am just, think is way overkill. Also not good for runoff and all sorts of other things concentrating. So those are the types of changes and what, you know, what should be a core thing. Hopefully, fair and quick Zoom meeting, we can get those things resolved and put together the same comparative kind of numbers that we have done so we can compare all the options. The lay-down yard.
Matt Senior.
I don't really want to go back and forth about Lisa Thomas on her statement. I just want to say that I disagree with it. It's rewriting history. It's inaccurate and she attributes intentions to the majority that don't exist and have not been reflected in our actions. That's all I want to say, just.
Richard?
I'd just like to add something. I actually emailed Jen Rogers on June 18th and after I went and checked out the mosquitoes at both locations. So there was a follow-up on it. So I don't want you to think that I didn't do my due diligence and I emailed her what I found because she wasn't, she wasn't available to attend with me. So me and Robert were guinea pigs.
What did you find?
I found it to be basically the same in each place. You know.
Each place?
Well, each place being the football field and the rattle bit. That it was, there really wasn't a difference in, at the time that I was there, I was there at 7:30.
Recovered from your bug bites.
Huh?
Well, you recovered from your bug bites.
I was happy to give up.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Matt Senior?
Just a question for John. John, we've been talking about football fields, you know, and their use. First of all, the project that was going forward would not have eliminated the football field at all. But secondly, we've had discussions after March and I believe that you had determined that that was not feasible and there wasn't something moving forward, at least at that, at that point. So, and it wasn't just something that we just ignored or didn't report or anything like that?
The same group tried to do this a year ago and weren't able to get football started and we still don't know that it's going to be viable. So, you know, my follow-up to one, I had a discussion with Wendy after that email and the discussion was, well, who knows? So she, she is clearly, in that email, she starts off saying that she eat her hat or what other the expression was, that she was surprised, expressing surprise that. So I can only respond to what my staff says and, again, I don't think we have a clear understanding of how many people are registered or will be registering and whether as a seven-town team that they need to play in our town. So those are all still legitimate issues that.
Julie?
Yes.
I did notice though, in front of Conlon Farms, that there was advertisements in our town for another football town, town and cheer and eagle, whatever it was, football we, they were advertising in the town Coventry for players, for whatever that's worth.
And town is actually one of the towns that are supposed to be part of the seven-town coalition.
I don't know, I just found it interesting.
All right, on to our new business. First item, eight A 21 slash 22 dash one, consideration, possible action, declaration of racism as a public health crisis. Number one under this is establishment of a committee to spearhead community conversations on race. I can send this over to steering. Yes, Lisa Conant?
I have a question, just if maybe a procedure, I'm just wondering why that's placed under the declaration, it's actually not a declaration supporting? Because it's, the community conversations is a separate thing.
They've been lumped together.
I agree, yeah. It's a different item. Should be.
Well, and as I started the discussion, I thought we would take number one first, but.
No.
Open to suggestions of.
Can't separate it now, can we?
Well, they are separate items, label one and two.
Yeah. So number one, establishment of a committee to spearhead community conversations on race. I think that should start in steering again. We haven't really talked, we talked about it when we thought the board of ed was going to take the lead and our human services person was going to be involved. But that's all changed again. Yes, Lisa Thomas?
Didn't we discuss this in steering? Did I read about this in the minutes?
I don't know if it was at the last meeting, but it's been, yeah.
We talked about that, like CREC could be helpful to us.
John Elsesser discussed next steps on community conversations. He suggested a small group of three to five community leaders meet with CERC over the summer to plan the fall workshops. He mentioned Lisa Thomas had volunteered to help, Lisa Conant then also offered to be involved, John mentioned that we need other folks, et cetera, et cetera. So.
We did talk about it in the last meeting.
And Richard Williams has volunteered, expressed an interest. His son, Robert Williams, has also expressed an interest in being involved. So there's four community leaders as it is. I mean, I would be comfortable with you guys, with you guys. If everybody's comfortable, we could have a consensus that we'd have four community leaders, that you could begin the process with CREC and maybe come back to us if you need something else or more help, more information, but maybe get.
What does that mean, though? Go to CREC?
Use them. They should have. They're able to facilitate some of their.
They can help plan the work groups and the sessions and who you need to.
Lisa Conant and I have already participated in a couple of sessions with the, I've lost her name, and John.
John.
I did as well.
I just mentioned this because.
Yes.
You raised your hand. Can't remember her name. I correct. But anyway.
Gloria.
But isn't Gloria in the world? Thank you. So we've had, we've been able to hear a little bit about what's going on and what's being proposed. And she has a lot of, as Lisa was saying, a lot of, or you were asking, a lot of structure. There's a lot of structure in place and things that she would help facilitate. I think we should try to also advocate for somebody associated with the board of ed or the schools or a student, maybe a high school student.
Robert Williams is on the board of ed.
Well, Robert would be almost close. He's a pastor.
I think he comes from an interesting perspective with all of the, well, first of all, he's biracial. And.
I'm not saying he's not.
No.
I was thinking about the board of ed.
But all the clubs and organizations and he has a unique perspective.
He's been an advocate.
He has.
So I think at least for getting it off the ground and then, like I said, come back if you need more people or more suggestions or help.
I was going to say too, that the town man's field has a committee established already that does this, so we may want to reach out to them, to talk to them and see how they've structured it, how they've got.
They're having community conversations on race. Yes, Matt Senior?
So I think it would make sense that they begin their work, try to come to some sort of a plan, but then bring it back to the council for our consideration and input before they move forward. It sounded like you were almost like, just go run with it or something. I'm not sure that that's the case, so.
Okay.
What?
They could report back to us.
We can report back.
There's got to be a committee to do that, to do anything.
Great, absolutely. But what's their first steps is what I'm saying is.
We're going to figure those.
The four that need to communicate.
The team of four of us, we're going to figure out those four steps.
Reach out to the woman.
And then what the council already knew.
Gloria, is that what you said?
Yeah, I mean, we probably want to meet, set up a meeting with Gloria. Because she's been providing structure and guidance. I think she anticipates that role.
Yeah. I know Robert hopes to be part of that even once he's, next year. I think it's an important piece for him and for me as well.
I remember him actually on something. Do you want me to get in touch with Gloria? Who's our, who goes next, or Anne Marie? Maybe Anne Marie needs to know. And she also probably wants to.
She should at least staff this committee.
Yeah.
To be helpful to, you know.
She also has experience with this.
Yeah, she's done this type of work in Bristol.
So would she get an address for it?
She'd be glad to.
Yeah, if she's our staff person, that would be great. So you'll get her therefore email addresses? Very good.
Need a motion to do this or?
I think we can do it by consensus, I believe.
Establish a committee?
Does everybody agree that we start moving in this direction?
So are we going to call it a working group?
Sure.
Yeah, it's a good candidate.
Okay. So number two under this is sign on to endorse Senate Bill one. Okay, so number two under this is sign on to endorse Senate Bill 1.
Start with a motion. I'll make a motion. Make a motion that we sign on to the attached Senate Bill 1. Made similar comments in the recommendation from steering to full council here that a lot of work has been done to craft the language of that, to kind of handle lots of facets, things we probably never would have even thought of that are real world consequences, real world scenarios. So if you look inside the Senate Bill 1, see there. But they've addressed so many things, I think that a lot of time and attention's been put into that. And it does address the kind of things, I know Matt, when we talked about it in steering, he expressed something about the infant mortality rates and things like that, that were, you know, things that might not have immediately come to front of mind here, but are very real world for, for the people that live those lives every day. So anyway, in, in short, my motion would be, I move that we sign on to endorse Senate Bill 1 as attached.
I'll second that. With a qualification, I'm, I'm not sure what sign on means. I guess, do we want to say that we support their work? Is that?
That's amenable to manning, sure. Absolutely amended.
Support the work or support the?
Statement.
The statement?
The statement.
Yeah. I mean, it's legislation, so is it a statement?
Yeah, yeah. It's a.
So I thought we talked about it as endorsement of it, really.
Right, yeah, right.
So maybe we should, maybe I should rescind my motion, make a motion that we, that we sign the statement of support. Issue a statement of support of this.
And Lisa, see, you rescind your second.
I rescind my, rescind my second. amended motion.
New motion.
New motion.
Any further, Matt Senior?
Can you clarify what that means?
Which part?
Your, your motion.
So my motion, I think I said that we want to issue a statement of support of, well, it's called Senate Bill 1 here for clarity, but I think it's now been mentioned as law, so that we could support that with all of the work that went into that Senate Bill now law that does declare racism as a public health crisis. And all of that is defined and discussed in great detail inside there.
Richard.
We want to declare that the town to coventry. We want to sign on to support the state law. In all of this, that's it? We'll get on.
Yes. So I'm just trying to see the technicality of that or?
It's a weird, it's kind of a weird issuing the statement of support.
So how did it come out of steering? What decision did you guys?
So I hadn't read it yet. I just wrote a present, but John and Lisa voted to recommend to the full council that we, I don't know what the word that was used, endorse or support SB 1.
You had read the legislation on, on your steering event?
No.
So.
It was just a, it was a supportive document. I don't, I don't think it was on the agenda. It was not an item on the agenda, right?
It was.
It was an item on the agenda?
With the attachment.
Do we, I mean, maybe you're a little further, but I hate to do this, parse it like this, but. Do we need a written statement or do we need just votes for it tonight that indicates our support?
It was, it was trying to do the same thing you just did for the, you know, Senate, Senate disastment.
Right. Agreed.
That, that was the intent. Instead of trying to spend another three months trying to craft a statement, basically as John said, they already spent a lot of time working on this. They came up with a statement that was adopted into law and you're just saying whether endorse, support, acknowledge. But the mayor's statement, you know, you just signed on to, to kind of support. So the theory, instead of us recreating a wheel and spending a lot of time on this, because you have a citizen that asks for something that, you know, you don't have to grant it. But in the meantime, the state has taken action.
Lisa Thomas.
So this was initiated by a citizen who spoke to us at the council meeting. And at that time, SB 1 hadn't been signed into law. So in a certain sense, the fact that, that we had this legislation, it kind of moved, the request of that citizen moved. You know, so a lot of towns have started passing these, these regulations. But now that there's a state law that covers, covers us all. And I, I wonder if, so early on in our town, or last summer, maybe it was last summer, it's been so long. We did adopt a statement about systemic racism. We spent a lot of time talking about it and we did adopt it. I mean, I, I think in some ways that, right, didn't we adopt that?
We did. It's a jam question.
Yeah, and I, in some ways, maybe that incorporates the spirit of this legislation. I mean, this, I think part of what this legislation is doing is looking at systemic racism and part of the impact of systemic racism is on the health of the people, physical health, mental health of those who are impacted by systemic racism. So I would wonder if that statement, you know, really, we've done this through that statement, would that satisfy us?
I would have to look at the statement.
I don't know if you want to.
I would tell you it was very.
Continue this and maybe put these things side by side?
Continue maybe, because I, as I recall, the statement that we put out last June was a specific response to the death of George Floyd, the murder of George Floyd. So.
The statement was brought about because of that, but then we tailored it to try to be a little more encompassing.
It was very raw.
Yeah.
But it.
Seems like three.
It was a little, it was, I know. It was a little different than, than, I mean, I don't know if you would want to go back and tweak that or, you know, whatever. I, I don't know.
So I'll save, okay.
Go ahead.
I understand why, you know, the reasoning behind putting this, you know, putting the whole Senate bill up for, you know, consideration. It'd be very difficult for me to sign on to this bill, just because there's a lot in it that I don't think, I just wouldn't have done it that way. For example, how, how is DPH going to conduct a study on their own COVID response? You know, that's one of the main tenets of the bill and it's in the, you know, it's in the title almost, you know, at the beginning. And it sort of works backwards. It's, it's declaration and then search for evidence. But it doesn't, you know, there's nowhere in there that explains that the committees are going to look for the reasoning behind the numbers. There's lots of data out there already, you know, I think. I've read it. So, you know, it's sort of the reasoning behind that data that I think that needs to be investigated for anything to happen positively. There's, there's a lot in education that I wouldn't change. So, you know, it's, it's a number of things that I have, you know, extensive notes, sort of, you know, picking it apart. But, you know, it's, it's, it'd be difficult for me to just sign on to the whole Senate bill. But I understand why, you know, John and Lisa, you know, moved it forward as a, as an example to sign on to. But those are my thoughts.
Did you have something to add, Richard?
It was more of the, the first statement that we signed on to is three paragraphs long, right? This is 27 pages.
Yeah, easier to.
I think that we need to go back and look at our original statement that we put out and, and maybe look at that. I think we've addressed a lot of this already as a council.
And I am not about endorsing Senate Bill 1 myself.
So to be, just to be clear, this is, this is current state law, right?
Do you think we support all state laws?
Of course you do.
Apparently not. We follow the law.
It's not the same as.
I don't think any of us can say we support a piece of legislation that's passed.
All right, so there's a motion on the table to sign on, made by John and seconded by Lisa.
Well, I think that the wording was very, was, I think they went back and amended the wording.
Statement of support.
Yeah, that we issue a statement of support and that could be as easy as a vote.
We ready to vote then? All those in favor of a statement of support of Senate Bill 1, please say aye.
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 All those opposed, nay.
Tell the secretary.
There's four nays and three ayes. Does not pass. All right. So. Next item of new business, 8B, 21 slash 22 dash 2, consideration possible action, authorization of resolution for lease purchase of dump truck and fine cut mower. Does anybody want to make a motion?
I'm trying to.
Yeah.
Chair.
Go ahead, John.
Just before we move too far past that, there was talk of wanting to put it side by side with the past motion. Is that going to happen now or is that completely off the table? I'm sorry, I'm talking back about this Senate Bill 1, Declaration of Racism as a Public Health Crisis.
But if we don't support it, what would be the point of putting?
It wasn't my suggestion. I, maybe, Richard, was it yours? I don't.
The discussion.
That you were talking about, let's put that side by side to the, to the last resolution that was passed.
Those weren't my words exactly.
Okay, I'm sorry.
What I, what I, what I said was, is that we addressed this and maybe we need to resend the whole thing and bring it back.
That's what I'm getting at.
Is that we did, we did say that, that we were going to look at what we had put forward last, help me.
June.
June.
So steering can do that?
And come back with that and, and, and make sure that we've addressed that issue appropriately. I don't.
All right, well, I am fine with having steering open and relook at our statement about, does somebody, do you have what it was called specifically?
A resolution. Searching for it, I can't find it.
Does it need to go back to steering or can it just come to our council next time?
We're going to have another meeting with steering in between.
Steering meets first. Steering meets next Monday, so they could quickly at least.
Make sure we have the right document.
Look at it.
I guess I have a standard schedule.
Yep.
All right, so that's, that's all of the part of steering, a comparison of the, kind of a little overview, look at it, try to see if, how much is already addressed.
Okay.
Thank you.
Is that what you said? You're going to compare it to this SB 1?
That we're going to relook at it.
The current, so what's the comparison to?
We're no longer.
He says doing a comparison of what?
Comparison of the resolution you did and the current need of, of what's covered.
Okay.
Not, not tied to Senate Bill 1.
Correct.
Just seeing if it, if it covers it already, covers the issue already, or whether it needs to either be tweaked or expanded.
Does everybody agree?
Yes.
We can look at it. All right, can I have a motion? Did you find?
So do I have to read the whole resolution, John, or just now there for your consideration?
I don't think you need to read it, but I think we may want to change it.
Okay.
Now that you've done the fire truck.
Right.
We should probably add the fire truck in and if, if I can give some suggestions on how to change it.
Sure.
I think your resolution kind of covered the changes, but it'd be better to have this in the document. So after, in the first whereas, after a large fine cut mower at a cost of $69,500, take out the semicolon and.
And the fire truck.
And fire truck for $617,000 and semicolon. And then the second whereas, whereas the town plans to purchase these items currently with $222,000 funds from the town's non-returning expenditure fund, and then it's all in one document.
So the 159, we're only adding 13,000, I mean, 3,500 this year with the 12 month, 12 year lease. We only added 3,500 to our debt. Oh, you're talking about the actual lease payment? That's what you're talking about now?
Right, that's like 59,000 or something.
Does the actual lease payment come out? Is that what that is?
Oh, that's right, yeah.
It's what's in the thing.
Yes.
Okay.
So the first payment plus the increase, or not just the first payment.
Go back to Amanda's memo.
You have the right number though, that's all I'm just asking. 222,000.
We have an annual lease payment of 59,000 and which means.
Okay.
So 59,000 needs to be added to.
To the 159.
Yeah, five. I get you to 222.
Actually doesn't, but pretty close.
218,5.
Yeah.
Right, but then you're adding the 3,500, right?
This is to make the lease payment.
That's the difference between the number we said and the number we came up with, so.
Yes, we need to, it's a 59,000, it's already in our. Let me read this again, I'm sorry. Yeah, okay, I guess you only need to add 3,500 to the 159,500.
Oh, two.
No, it has to be the total amount.
Well, then it wouldn't be, so are we currently buying the?
Now I know why I meant it didn't do it.
Yeah. So when it was 500,000, that money's in where? That's from CNREF? Currently, John?
Yeah.
That's already approved though, right?
But I, I think she only gave the amount for those two pieces, so I think we have to add the fire truck into that.
Right, but wouldn't it be the 117,000 or whatever the new money is?
No, it's just the annual payment.
Which is 59 at the 12 years.
No, no, what it's saying is, is we're going to buy the dump truck and the mower from, with CNREF and then enter a lease agreement to replenish the CNREF. So that's not what you guys are talking about.
Okay, you can do that?
Yeah.
That's the lease purchase thing that we do, right?
Yes.
That's our, that's our thing.
So wouldn't you add the 117 to the 159?
Well, it'd be 617 now.
Right, the full, the full, full price.
Yeah, well, definitely, but that's why you, that's okay.
Not my words.
If Billy could see how much her face did right there.
It's a due to. It's a due to. It's an obligation that comes back.
We're purchasing it now to lock in the prices, I'm assuming.
Yeah.
And then you would make arrangements for the lease. That's basically so, so you.
Yeah, the bill actually won't show up.
It is 159 plus 617.
So 776,5. That's those two numbers out of the other.
So how much is it?
776,500.
He's going to make that up.
That's 159, 159,5 plus the 617 for the fire truck.
So why don't you do it out of, oh, you can't do it out of 1.5%? That's even over our 1.5% authority.
So do I have a motion?
So what John wants to do is change the resolution and then just say we approve the resolution. So what we have to do is agree on the language that we're including in the resolution. Right, John? Is that what you're, that's what you want us to do?
Yeah.
That sounded right. So far we've added the fire truck.
The fire truck for 617,000.
Yeah. And then we added it to the total.
So it'd be 776, 500.
6, 500. And now we're reading the rest of it to make sure it doesn't need to go somewhere else too, right?
So what, so two.
Are we doing that right?
No. I don't think it's 776 because it'd be 617 plus 69, 500 plus 90.
Yeah, 159.5 plus 617, John.
Yeah.
The first two numbers equal the 159.500 in the second paragraph.
So just add that to 16, 617.
All right.
And that's 776, 500.
All right.
That's what you want?
Yeah.
And that's, so that language is correct. So do we want to, do we make a motion to amend the resolution as suggested or something and then?
Yes.
So I move that we amend this resolution. Has it got a name?
It's called resolution.
Resolutions for lease purchase of dump truck and fine cut mower and fire truck.
I like it.
Do you want to second it then?
I second that. Thank you.
And we're amending it, we're, we're amending it as we just discussed. So we're adding a fire truck for 617 and, and then we're changing 159.5 to 776, 500.
Second that.
So everybody understands.
So everybody in favor of amending the resolution, please say aye.
Aye.
And then now we need authorization.
A motion to approve the resolution or to authorize you, John? How's that work?
Just to prove it.
Did you?
Okay, I moved, John seconded. I moved to approve the resolution, John seconded.
All those in favor of approving the resolution as amended, please say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous.
We all voted in favor. We find out we screwed it up, we can always change it. Next meeting. We'll still order the truck.
Yeah.
All right, item 8C, 21 slash 22 dash 3, consideration possible action, American Rescue Plan Fund allocations document. So our Eastern Highlands Health District had made a request of us, which was discussed at finance. Go ahead, Matt.
It's moved that the town council appropriate $4,634 of American Relief Plan Funds to Eastern Highlands Health District.
Second.
Thank you, Richard. Any questions?
I was stuck on the, the name of the thing.
Or dis.
Like American Rescue.
Or discussion? Lisa?
And just, I know it's in the notes and all, but just to clarify for people listening, this is money that Eastern Highlands Health District already has expended on our behalf. Um, so we're.
Actually, there was more to it than that. It was money they didn't have to spend or something.
They were charged rent that they were anticipating that they.
But they could have had free, free use of a place here in town. Instead, they rented something and didn't realize they were going to be rented.
And that's our portion.
Yes, this is our portion, correct.
That's some pretty good, right?
Uh, they had flu clinics for a lot and so the rental cost of the, of the community room at Mansfield, uh, community.
I think Mansfield already like put in over a hundred thousand dollars.
Yes.
Yeah. A little bit.
That was from CRF money though. That's, that was a whole different thing.
Different potfill money.
All right, all those in favor of approving?
You have to remember they get millions of dollars extra from the state of Peters.
Our American Rescue Plan Fund allocation for the Eastern Highland Health District request, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
It wasn't the whole list.
No. 8D, 21 slash 22 dash 4, consideration possible action, increased to capital lease authorization.
Isn't that the fire truck?
Isn't that the fire truck?
That's okay.
You did a two, so 8F's the only one.
No, 8. 21 slash 22 dash 5.
Let's put them on a committee.
Consideration possible action, staffing to address broadcast technology support needs. Lisa Thomas and I had discussed this at our finance meeting. There certainly seems to be a need in order to analyze and maybe update some of our stuff. And I did have a citizen who volunteered, who's had some experience with streaming stuff. So I don't know if anybody else has any suggestions, but if we had a, one of those great volunteers in town who knows something, we could certainly start.
I, I don't know if it's, I've heard equipment, I've heard having enough people available. I think a whole assessment, but also can take down the stress.
Who's going to do the assessment? That's what you have to determine.
Right, I've been, I.
Campaign committee?
No, they're not overly staffed or active, right?
They need people.
Maybe, maybe, um.
So is this staffing? Is that?
Look, Richard's volunteer.
No, can't we just hire someone to, to do this?
Yeah.
And just get it done? So there, there's two things. There's the equipment and then there's the, the who's going to show up at meetings.
All right, right.
So I think what we're, we're just asking right now though, in this item, is for John to maybe put together a plan, which might be.
Yeah, help us with our path forward.
We need X number of dollars to pay people to show up. We need, we can hire this consultant or somebody from Charter or whatever to look, look, I mean, you probably know better than anybody what some of your needs are. And we also don't know how long, you know, we could be right back in Zoom world again in a few months. Sorry.
I know.
Uh, but the way things are going, we just, we just don't know. And I think we need to, to just make it smoother and John shouldn't be running five different things technology wise while he's also trying to be Tommy Anderson.
Agreed. I agree with what I'm saying and, and I think that it's just, maybe it's an upgrade or constant throughout.
Do you think your next interim could help with this assessment? Because they're kind of young to understand.
Well, this is a tech, tech issue versus, I mean, so again, I'd be glad to try to put together some thoughts on it. I mean, we, we had an assessment for the broadcast stuff that we got a partial grant for. We didn't, weren't able to get all of it because they, we got about 10 or 15% of what we asked for.
When was that assessment done?
That was for the Pig Petra grant, so that was a year and a half, a year or so.
And what was their assessment?
That, you know, we got the core pieces, the most important pieces that were out of length of service, but, you know, the cameras are, are going. The streamer, we've had some issues with, but the board of that has the same thing and they have never had issues. And we've just relocated it from this room down to the main computer room so that there's less of a communication issue. Uh, so, you know, but anyways, I don't need to go through step by step tonight, but, um, so the. And we're, we're in a process and have been in a process of reworking conference room B and we're waiting for Accret Electric to install a new TV set and that will take care of this thing that failed at the last meeting, which only lasted two months. So it's being simplified by going to two TV sets versus need to visually switch things around. That piece will disappear. So I, I think that that will make that one more reliable, but it still gets to, are we going to have a person add a meeting? And that's, I think, the, the core thing that we have to, to look at so that. So put some thoughts together, but it's going to not be yet because I've got a fairly full plate. Even hiring a consultant, it goes through a process of hiring a consultant. So it's probably faster for me to write it than hiring yourself just because the process we have to go through.
Isn't there an internet company like Zoom or WebEx or who are the other people that do all these things?
Team.
But isn't there somebody who has a salesperson or somebody that can?
Yeah.
Just sort of come in and, I mean, it seems like it should all be on a laptop. I mean, at this point, technology, I mean.
The, the problem is, is that if you want to broadcast to cable and to YouTube, you start adding complications with, with these things. And I'll tell you that, you know, love or not love the Owls, a lot of towns are buying them now in a back order because they saw ours and it does things that nobody else can do because otherwise you gotta set up, the alternative is you set up a broadcasting studio where you have, you know, like multiple cameras and microphones and, and it becomes even more complicated. The issue is trying to simplify versus complicate.
Yes, Lisa.
Do we have a sense of, so part of, part of the concern is for the public to continue to be able to watch the meetings as they were able to even pre-COVID through the live streaming on YouTube or cable channel? Do we, do we have or can we get numbers that will give us a sense, I don't know if this is possible, of how many people access us through cable and how many through YouTube? And I'm, because a lot of people are moving away from the TVs connected to cable and I'm, I'm wondering, I mean, my bottom line question is, can we cut the cable broadcast and, and just broadcast to YouTube and would that, like, would that make our technology work better? If not, it doesn't matter. But I'm just wondering if that's.
Well, that's really, that, that part is really only for council meetings.
Right.
So, um, and the key thing there is, and HB Communications has recommended that we buy this Latronics streaming thing. That's about seven or eight thousand dollars versus the $200 thing that we have that works fine for the board of that.
It doesn't work for us.
It has with Spidey, but now we've tried problem solving and, and it's been working since we moved that. So.
For 200, can we just get another one?
That was Plan B and unfortunately we have a cultural, culture and organization that, that doesn't want to even spend even 200 bucks. But we are ready, if it fails one more time, we're just going to buy another one for 200 dollars. Uh, but we think that the technology that we have on the board of that.
Yeah, based on this conversation, you should know that we would submit more than 200 dollars to make this work.
We could certainly put in more than 200 dollars of time at this table waiting for the technology to work.
But yes.
It's time.
The, the issue.
We just want it fixed.
Give him 300. Go for it.
The issue is.
Often you hear that, extra money being thrown out of my.
Well, the issue is, the other one is so much overkill and it's another very sophisticated and complicated thing that will have a service contract on it. That's probably 800 dollars a year.
Right.
And, and it's got a life of three years and then they'll say it's out of service. So sometimes simpler, as I said, sometimes simpler is better, but it has to work. But if it works with the board of that, why isn't it working over here? So now we've tried to use their resources to help us. And now we're, so far it's been working. So, um, so anytime you're adding a lot of technology anywhere, I mean, things just sometimes don't work. And, and we're trying to get things simpler, not more complex.
Just to let you know, I watch a lot of board of that.